March 17th, City Council meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Reverend Dr. Erskine Fosh Senior, Presiding Elder Emeritus and Pastor Emeritus Metropolitan AME Zion Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor Marcus Lundey from District 9. Please stand. Let us pray. O God, our help in ages past, our hope for the years to come, our shelter from the stormy blast in our eternal home. Under the shadow of thy wing may we dwell secure. Sufficient is thine arm alone, and our defense is sure. We thank thee, O God, for this privilege and all the manifestations of privileges thou hast given to us through the years. You brought us such a long ways. Under the shadow of thy throne, let us dwell now, knowing that you are our source and our resource. Thank you, because sometimes we enjoy the blessings that you send our way, and we forget even to stop to say thank you. For those times, we make amends right now and ask you to forgive us, and let us love you and love each other as you have loved us. Thank you for pulling back the curtain of another night and letting us see the morning light. Bless us. Let your face shine upon us, and we thank you, dear God, that even in the midst of terrible calamities and cataclysmic events, your hand has always brought us. Thank you. Be with us, and bless the purpose for which we come this morning. Bless the leadership of this city and cities everywhere, and may they realize the great, awesome opportunity they have, as they make decisions that will bless and keep your children. Lord, give us more of your grace, and send us forth to meet these duties and responsibilities, knowing that you're with us. We're standing on hallowed tiptoe, waiting to see what our God is about to do. Thank you now, and use us, we pray, to the glory of thy kingdom. And we ask it all in the precious, wonderful, cataclysmic name, that awesome name, that has power just calling your name. You are our Savior, our Redeemer, our Collaborator. You are everything we need. Help us to trust you more. Do it just now, in the name of Jesus, the blessed Lamb of the living God. In your precious name, Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, if you would call a roll, please. Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Present.
Councilmember Lundey.
Here.
Councilmember Parker.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Rafferty.
Present.
President Protim Robertson.
Present.
Councilmember Scales. Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
Present. Good morning. Minutes are not ready from November 18th through Mar- 2014 through March 10th, 2015. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Twenty councils. The city of Birmingham recently topped Forbes' list of the most affordable cities. Birmingham was recognized for its affordable homes, shopping, transportation commutes, and healthcare. We are certainly proud that our city has once again been nationally recognized as a great place to live, work, and play. A huge congratulation goes out to UAB men's basketball team for winning the 2015 Conference USA Championship. We're proud of the young men and the coaching staff for playing a great game on last weekend, and wish them the luck, all the luck, on this St. Patrick's Day as they move forward to the big dance. We will have the team invited to come down here. They're in the middle of getting ready for their big game on Thursday, but at the appropriate time, and hopefully it's at the end of the Final Four, we'll have them come down to City Council. The Great American Cleanup Kickoff will be held this Thursday, March 19th, in Lynn Park, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Here to give us more information is Brenda Dent Russell of Keep Birmingham Beautiful, or the Keep Birmingham Beautiful Commission. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Mr. Fosh and the entire council. It is time again for us to have our Great American Cleanup. You know, we are ongoing about cleaning up Birmingham, but we designate this particular time according to the guidelines of Keep America Beautiful to actually do a kickoff for the Great American Cleanup. And we're going to be presenting the supplies that we get from our 12 sponsors, we have 12 national sponsors, and we will be getting supplies and distributing them to the communities on Thursday, from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 o'clock p.m. And what we do, we give these to the neighborhood presidents. They come and pick these supplies up. And I have put something in front of your, on each one of your stations, and it's a wanted sign, because what we're trying to do now is get those bad-looking signs down. It's a bad representation for Keep Birmingham Beautiful, and it does not do anything to add to the appearance of the city of Birmingham. Now Arbor Week is also going to be on next week, and Mr. Randall Smith is here, because Randall is going to talk to you about, we do a seedling giveaway every year.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning.
Council. This is our 23rd Annual Arbor Day Program, and I just wanted to just announce that the city of Birmingham, in conjunction with the Alabama Forestry Commission, will do its annual seedling giveaway on March 24th. That's 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and the location will be out on Short 20th Street. And we have about seven species of seedlings we're going to give away this year. Last year, we, we lost a lot of trees during, during the storms, so we, we are, we're trying to replant the city to enhance the beautification. And the species we got there are Schumard oak, crepe myrtles, lob lolly pine, river birch, black gum, cherry bark oak, and bald cypress. And we hope that you all can come out and grab a seedling. Thank you.
And thank you all for all of your efforts and initiatives to help keep Birmingham beautiful. Thank you.
And Ms. Abbott, or should I say Valerie Appleseed Abbott? You be sure to go out there and get a couple of seedlings, too, to help keep Birmingham beautiful.
Hey. I'm gonna bring you one for you to plant.
Absolutely.
Set the example.
Will do. This morning, we would like to recognize Birmingham Police Department Explorer's Post Number 12. They recently competed in the Alabama Law Enforcement Explorer Association's annual competition at the University of Montevallo last month. Here to give us more information on the competition results is Lieutenant Sheila Finney, Sergeant Raymond Cochrane, Officer Denise Bone, and Officer Timothy Bell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To the Honorable Mayor William Bell, staff, and City Council, I'm just delighted to be here this morning. I am Lieutenant Sheila Finney with the Birmingham Police Department, Community Service Division, and Explorer's Post 12. I am here on behalf of Captain Kathy Peoples. She's the commander of the Community Service Division and chairman of the Explorer's Post 12. I am saddened to inform you that she's not here today, because she's planning to bury her father on Saturday, Mr. Calvin Curtis, so keep her family in your prayers. I am also here on behalf of Deputy Chief Irene Williams. She's the Support Service Bureau Commander. I would also, I am also here representing our very distinguished police chief, A.C. Roper. I would also like to introduce our staff of the Explorer's Post 12. First, I have Sergeant Raymond Cochrane. Sergeant Cochrane leads our Explorer's program. He does a very outstanding job. Officer Denise Bone. She's one of our post advisors, very dedicated to the job. And Officer Timothy Bell. And without further ado, I would like to introduce and present to you the Birmingham Post 12 Explorers. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Bell, President Austin, and City Council members. I'm Allison Watts, Sergeant for the Birmingham Police Explorer's Post 12. I'm a senior at Mortimer Jordan High School. On February 21st, six of us had the opportunity to go to the University of Montevallo to compete in the Alabama Law Enforcement Explorers Competition. At this competition, our post competed against municipalities within the state of Alabama and outside the state of Alabama. We would like to thank you all for giving us this opportunity to represent the city.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Darnell Cahoon. I'm a senior at Parker High School. The trophy that we are about to present to y'all, I mean to y'all, to you guys, are the trophy that we won at Alabama Law Enforcement Explorers Competition. Our first-place trophy was for hostage negotiation. Our second-place trophy was for domestic violence. And our third-place trophy was for bomb threat. Now, now the explorers will introduce themselves.
Good morning. My name is LaDarian Wright. I'm a senior at Arthur Park, at Arthur Harold Parker High School.
Good morning. I am a junior at Jackson Hole High School. My name is Cadarius Waters.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor Bell, City Council.
Good morning.
On behalf of Chief Roper, Mayor, and City Council, I'd like to present to our explorers that competed at the Police Olympics, we gave them some certificates for their appreciation. Too often, we hear about the bad that kids do, and it's an honor, especially on this city, to see some of the good. And Mayor, what's your take?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Last year, Councilors, Roughness Mountain partnered with the Boy Scouts of America and the Office of American Disability Act to apply for a KAWACO grant, C-A-W-A-C-O, grant to provide a four-day scout camp at Roughness for Boy Scouts that are disabled. Here to give us more information about the grant and the camp is Anthony Edwards, Regional Executive Director of the Boy Scouts of America, and Mr. Stan Treehugings Pala, of Executive, the Executive Director of Roughness Mountain Nature Park, as well as Director of ADA Compliance, Senator Linda Coleman. Stan, how you doing this morning?
Good.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor and council, and our staff, the Boy Scouts, Roughness Mountain, Senator Linda Coleman, and KAWACO Resource Conservation and Development Councils are partnering to put on a nature camp for special needs and disability. KAWACO RC&amp;D is the sponsor of, the sponsor of this event, and we would like to thank them. If you could stand, Patty.
Patty, come on up.
What we are providing is activities and crafts about animals, plants, and fossils, and many scout activities, such as setting up tents, learning about nature far as the What we are, what, this camp is on June 22nd through the 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. If you would like more information, please contact me at 969-4252. We're gonna, we open this up to all scouts with disability in the Birmingham, city of Birmingham. Thank you.
Mr., it's a great day to be alive, Roughness Mountain, and I love this city, and I, I think, Mr. Mayor, you haven't aged a bit. It's been a long time since I've been up here, but I've aged and lost a little hair. But anyway, I just want you to know that Roughness Mountain's committed to being inclusive, inviting all people up, and having access for everybody, and being a regional destination, and I invite you to all come out, see what's going on at Roughness, because it's really awesome what we're doing now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for the work you're doing. Thank you, Ron. And finally, Mr. President, it's been a little over five years that my administration has been in office, and one of the first decisions that I had to make as mayor was the individuals that I would surround myself with in order to help move this city forward. While the mayor has the singular title as mayor and the singular responsibility, he cannot do it without the men and women who serve with him, without those individuals who are committed just as much as he or she is committed to moving this city forward. I want to thank this young man who has been sitting next to me over those last five years, Mr. Chuck Fosh, for the outstanding job that he's done as Chief of Staff of my office. Today, I want to announce that Chuck will be transitioning over the next several weeks from the Chief of Staff position to that of Senior Advisor of Strategic Initiatives as a loaned executive to the city of Birmingham. I want to thank Chuck for his outstanding service as Chief of Staff to me, but he won't disappear. He will be working on projects within the mayor's office, and will be working with the various department heads in order to make sure that those initiatives are carried out. So I want to publicly thank Chuck for the hard work that he's given, the tireless hours that he's spent, and to thank his family for the sacrifice that they made to allow him to serve as my Chief of Staff here with the city of Birmingham. So Chuck, thank you, and look forward to continuing to work with you in your new capacity. So thank you. That's all I have at this time, Mr. President.
Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you have any council members, would you speak to the mayor? Counselor, Counselor Abbott, and Counselor Protim.
Don't forgive me, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can you repeat that new title again?
Well, I had to shorten it, so. As Senior Advisor of Strategic Initiatives, we have a number of projects that we're going to be working on that's going to require a lot of attention to, and over the next several weeks, he'll be transitioning to that position. And we'll have a press release and further details as to the specific duties and responsibilities in that capacity, in the projects that he'll be working on.
And this will be things like the Freedom Center and stuff like that?
Yes.
The, the new warm-up pool at the Crossplex?
A number of projects similar to that, and some that I haven't announced yet.
Thank you.
Mr. Protim.
Thank you, Mr. President, and as I reflect, probably 20 years ago, Chuck, Chief of Staff, formerly Chief of Staff, and I have a long relationship, and it goes back to even broadcasting a TV show called It's Showtime. And it's just kind of coincidental that his father's here, as we used to spend time at WATV and the radio station at that time with eight tracks and reels, and we've come a long way, haven't we, Doc? But I'm just so proud of you, Chuck, and your service to the city of Birmingham as Chief of Staff to Mayor Bell, and I know that your next steps will be ones that will be very positive, to help support the roadmap and the plans and the direction that our city will move forward. So I just want to congratulate you and thank you, first and foremost, for your service in the mayor's office, and look forward to continuing to work with you in your new endeavors. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Scales.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I'm gonna chime in on that, too, even though I have some things for only the mayor can do. But I do want to say congratulations, Chuck, and I'm not going to even question all the titles and, and what all of that means. I think that you, in your own way, have, along with working with the mayor, have given us international presence. I think that domestically, we've been able to do some things that probably Birmingham wouldn't have even been considered for, had not you and the mayor had the, the thought-forward process of what it takes in order to look progressive, more importantly, to be progressive. So I not only wish you well in your endeavors, I'm looking forward to whatever's going to come out of it. I was looking at, at your beautiful wife and your children and your dad, and I thought, oh, okay, so is Dr. Fosh coming, is the mayor gonna recognize him today? I didn't know what was going on, so nevertheless, I look forward to the mayor bringing you back. I don't like to, the mayor calls it micromanage, but I will say, I try not to devil too much unless it's something that requires money, and I want to understand it better, but other than that, I look forward to you continuing on with what you're doing. Yep, and make it work for you. Mr. Mayor, on 10th Place Northwest and the intersection of Eastwick Place, we do need a pothole to be filled over there. 600 Place of Robertson Drive, leading up to Roebuck Parkway, there are several potholes that are there that has been reported as well. Also, we have on Old Springville Road, there's some trash and litter that's going, if you leave Parkway East, going up Old Springville Road, also at the corner, intersection of Edwards Lake Road. And then we have turned in several concerns on behalf of Ms. Pat Daly, but I do know that one of them has to do with the 18-wheeler trucks that are in, that are being parked in residential community, and, and so she wanted to get some assistance in that regard. The last thing that I do want to bring to your attention, Mr. Mayor, because we've been getting a lot of calls about potholes, simply because it was, it was stated on a media outlet that potholes, that council members have monies in their respective districts to fill potholes. Well, I want to inform the public today, and with your permission, Mr. Mayor, if we can have a retraction on that, it came out of Office of Public Information, but I know that is incorrect. And what should have been stated is that Public Works fill those potholes, and I know that we had a delegate of council members to go to National League of Cities, but that's why people began to call about these potholes, because they think the council members have money and they're discretionary to be able to do that. And so it's very important, and we do know that the citizens have a right to know, so I want to bring that to your attention, that they need to be dialing 311 as that media outlet mentioned, but outside of that, that they need to be contacting the Public Works Department. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Hoyt?
Yes, I just wanted to say, Chuck, I'm very proud of you and your leadership, and you would have some understanding of these words, but it says, "Out of the night that coveth me, black as a pit from pole to pole, I think whatever gods there be for my uncomparable soul. In the field of clerk's circumstance, I have not wench nor cried aloud. Under the bludgeoness of chance, my head is bloody but unbowed. Beyond this place of wrath and tears loom but the horrors of shades. And yet, the minutes of the year is fine and shall find me unafraid. It matters not how straight the gate, how charged the punishment strolls. I'm the master of my fate. I'm the captain of my soul." There goes an Alpha Man. And all of us Alpha Men know that poem, because we had to learn that as men of Alpha. But I just think it's wonderful that your family is here to share your good news. I think a lot of what we do was predicated on your innuendo, as the mayor has already identified your skill set, and, and I think you're gonna do a great job, whatever it is that you do, and so I'm grateful to God that you've been here and been a part of this city, and so we appreciate your work and your work ethic. And I think if I'm ever in trouble, I'm calling Dr. Fosh to pray for me, because I think you got a direct communication to God. And Bishop Hoyt would say, "A faraway look in a nearby task," and you master that, and so I appreciate your work as well. You all have got a wonderful son and father, and, and so we just thank God for you all, your presence this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Protim.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one other honor we need to acknowledge this morning.
Okay. Well, I'll defer to you, Mr. President. Councilman Scales had her, she wanted to say something.
Yes, and Counsel Hoyt, as you said, so goes the Alpha Man, because I'm not a Greek lady at all, but I will say this. I hope that Chuck's endeavor will also lend itself to, it's kind of like yesterday, someone said, "I like short nails." I said, "Yeah, I like the hands that lean, not the only one that spans." So I hope that means that he's gonna get an increase in his pay. I'm sure she can appreciate that, ain't that right? Your wife.
Amen.
Yeah, I hope that that's what that means.
Thank you. One, before we move on with Mr. Protim, there, I was trying to get the numbers, the exact numbers. Counselor Scales, you mentioned that there was a comment or release about council members having funding. We actually did appropriate some funds to the council. I don't remember, if, I don't recall if it was this year last, or this budget cycle, last budget cycle.
Last.
But it was public improvement funds that each individual council member had, and that funding we can draw from to have potholes replaced in our district. I don't know if it was 50 or 70, what was it, Chad? 75,000 that we appropriated per council district to, to have, so for things like that, whether it's potholes or sidewalks, whatever we could spend the funds on in the area of public improvement, we did appropriate some funds for that. So that's, that, they may not have articulated that in their story, or whatever they were, whatever you're referring to, but that's the funding that we do have.
Okay. And the only thing that I wanted to say, if you don't mind me saying, Mr. President, I still want to be cautious in how we say that, because it was only $75,000. I know exactly what you're talking about, but the thing is, is that when you put that out there, that means that people are gonna think you have more money available than what you do, and that's why I'm saying about Public Works, because that's what we gave Public Works money to do in addition to other services that they provide. So if they call in, Counselor Scales, $75,000 is all that we have, and that's to be split up among several different projects. So I, and I appreciate you coming back and saying that, but I just wanted to make sure that we have that on the record, because other than that, Mr. President, it said that your, your respective council member is... Because other than that, Mr. President, it said that your respective council member is responsible, that's a different word, responsible for getting your potholes repaired.
Okay. Mr. Protem?
We ready now, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. To our esteemed colleague on the Birmingham City Council, and again, our fellow fraternity brother that has, represents District Eight. He is celebrating a birthday on this past Saturday, March fourteenth. So I want everyone to join us as we sing happy birthday to Councilor Stephen W. Hoyt.
Y'all so kind.
All right, and where's the cake? There's a cake somewhere.
Oh, really?
You ready?
Go ahead.
You ready? Me, 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 me. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear S Hoyt. Happy birthday to you.
Bless you all.
We'll let them blow the candles out after, Councilor.
No, no fires. Listen, that is quite special. Thank you all so much. Appreciate that, Councilor Protem. And appreciate my staff. I'm telling y'all something else. Bless you all so much.
Mr. Clerk, we're ready. Councilor Hoyt, happy birthday.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Ready for us to go on with the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, please.
All right. Mr. Clerk, we're ready.
Thank you.
Consent agenda starts on page two with item number two. Page three, item three is on consent. Page four, items five, four and five are on consent. Page five, items six and seven are on consent. Page six, item number eight is on consent. Page seven, excuse me, items nine and ten are on consent. Page eight, items eleven and twelve are on consent. Page nine, items thirteen and fourteen are on consent. Page ten, item number eighteen is on consent. Page eleven, items nineteen through twenty-three are on consent. Page twelve, Mr. President, item twenty-five should actually be a permanent operation item with a first reading and not item twenty-four, so take twenty-five off consent, and twenty-six and twenty-seven should be on consent.
And twenty-four should not be permanent?
It's not, no, it's the regular budget. There's just a mistake there, type.
Okay. And then you said twenty-six and twenty-seven are on consent?
That is correct.
All right.
So put the P by twenty-five.
Got you.
Page thirteen, items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty-one are on consent. Page fourteen, items thirty-two through thirty-five are on consent. Page fifteen, items thirty-six, items thirty-eight through forty are on consent. Page sixteen, items forty-one through forty-four are on consent. Page seventeen, items forty-five through fifty are on consent. And page eighteen, we have items fifty-one through fifty-six on consent. Page nineteen, items fifty-seven through sixty-two are on consent. Page twenty, we have items sixty-three as well as items sixty-five and sixty-six on consent. Page twenty-one, items sixty-seven through sixty-nine are on consent. Page twenty-two, items seventy through seventy-three are on consent. Page twenty-three, items seventy-four and seventy-six are on consent. Page twenty-four, items seventy-eight and seventy-nine are on consent. Page twenty-five, item eighty-three is on consent. And you have four addendum items, yes?
We have, Mr. Clerk, some addendums.
Yeah, four.
Yeah, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight. They passed. All right, thank you. Are council members wish to add or remove any items from the consent agenda? Councilor Abbott?
I have a long list, so let somebody else.
Councilor Scales?
Yeah, well.
About to say, and I do too. Mr. President, let me go back in order, because I know that that's what you would need from me. Hold on just a moment, if you don't mind. Hold on just a moment. There with me, Mr. President. Okay. Item number seventeen is not on consent, page ten. Is that right, Mr. President? I'm asking, not telling. Item number seventeen, page ten?
No, it's not on consent.
Okay, just want to make sure. I have questions about that. Also, on page fourteen, and I don't want anybody to get upset, because I'm gonna vote for it, but I'm bringing this, taking item number thirty-four off for a question that I have about the Eastern Area Framework Plan. And actually, if someone can let me know now, then we can leave this one on, because I'm gonna support it. I want to hear, you know who I'm talking to, with Mr. Mayor's permission. I want to know what's happening with the Eastern Area Framework Plan, because the money is there. So I don't know what happened. But item number fourteen, if we can, I mean, page fourteen, item thirty-four, gonna support it, Council, but I just want to be able to have that question answered during that time.
So you want this off consent?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind. Yes, sir, I just wanted to explain my position prior to. Also, Mr. President, this is item number seventy-two, got a question about that. That's page twenty-two. Item number seventy-two. Have some questions in regard to that. And I actually have some others, but maybe some of the other council members will.
Seventy-two and seventy-three.
Huh?
Was it seventy-two and seventy-three? Is that what you're talking about?
Then, yes, sir. Then, then I'd like to remove items seventy-two and seventy-three, Mr. President. And okay, so I'm gonna stop right there and then give some others the opportunity. But none of the addendum items are on consent. Am I correct, Mr. President?
No, no one has requested that.
Okay, so I will only ask for item number eighty-six on the addendum, Mr. President. If we can add that to consent, if there are no objections. And then I have a question about eighty-seven, so pass that, Mr. President.
Okay, all right.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Um, any other councilman, Councilor Abbott, you have some?
Yes, I have. Oh, go ahead.
You ready? You want to, Councilor? Go ahead, Councilor.
Well, item twenty-three, have we identified the properties for acquisition?
Item, what page is that, Councilor?
I'm sorry.
Eleven, I got it. Mr. Mayor, do you have someone that can respond to that? I think that would come under Mr. Cologne, I think. Item twenty-three, the neighborhood stabilization HUD funding. As soon as he gets here, we have him. Okay.
All right.
So you want to, you want to just take it off consent?
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
Okay, and item sixty-four needs to be referred to the committee, Public Safety Committee.
Page twenty?
I mean, to the Benefits Committee. And Public Safety.
Okay.
Okay.
That it?
All right, and the item twenty, we've not, at least I have not gotten an update on the change orders and who made the change orders. And so I, you know, we need to discuss that.
We're gonna, we will have to take that up in executive session, and we'll do that immediately after the consent agenda is, we're complete with that.
Okay.
And that will be item twenty, we don't have to remove it from cons, well, I guess it needs to be removed from consent. But it will be item twenty and eighty-eight.
Oh. Uh, Mr. President, on item sixty-four?
Yes.
This was a court-ordered item that
The bid.
Right, right, and I just want to make sure that this is something that was ordered by the judge for us to do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and if we get a copy of that order, I think that would help me to understand.
All right, Councilor Hoyt, you got any more?
And thirty-six.
Thirty-six? You want to take that off consent? All right. Is that it?
I think that's, that's it.
Thirty-six, okay. Councilor Abbott, you have any?
I do.
No, you said you were.
Yes, I had several. On page twelve, I just wanted to ask a question about item twenty-four. Is this a contractual obligation that we're fulfilling to Infinity Call Center?
It's an economic incentive agreement that we have.
Yeah.
As you recall, when we came before the council at the time that we were putting the incentive package together, this is a component of that as part of their move back into the city of Birmingham.
Well, I thought, I thought that's what it was, but I didn't want to trust my memory. It's, yeah, it can be placed on consent if there are no objections.
Okay.
It is an item of permanent.
No, it's not, it's not. No, it's the item below it, item twenty-five. You have any more?
Okay, yeah, I do. Okay, on page thirteen, item twenty-nine, I read the explanation of Territory Nine, but I was still a little bit unclear about it. Can someone who knows about Territory Nine explain what, what, why is it a separate territory? And why are we singling it out for AM Share to collect?
Barbara, can you respond to that? We have somebody that will come in.
So if we could take that one off consent?
John Cologne is here on that other item.
Okay.
Okay.
But go on, Ms. Abbott, I'm sorry.
Okay, then on that same page, item thirty, I wanted to add it to consent and remove recommended by the committee of the whole, because we didn't have a quorum and we couldn't recommend anything.
Okay.
Okay, so then on that same page, item thirty-one, I just wanted to ask probably Mr. Bitas if this has anything to do with those streets that Alda committed to pave within the city of Birmingham, like Claremont and?
No, ma'am, that's actually another grant we received from Alda to make improvements to some streets as far as ADA access.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I'm fine with it staying on consent. I just wondered if that meant anything as far as some of those paving projects they committed to do.
Yeah, that's a separate project.
Okay, thank you. Then on the next page, item fifteen, excuse me, let me try again. Page fifteen, item thirty-seven, that one has not been to Budget and Finance. And we really don't know much about it.
Which one is that?
Item thirty-seven on page fifteen. Then on page twenty, on page twenty, item sixty-four, I know that it was a court order that we had to bid it every year. And I just wanted to ask, I didn't recall that we could add in there to extend the term of the agreement for additional years. I thought we had to bid it every single year. Is, did something change, or did I just remember incorrectly?
My understanding, Councilor, is that that was in the bid specification, that language was in the bid specification, to allow us to extend the contract for a period up to three years.
Okay, and that's okay with the order from the court?
Yes, ma'am.
Everybody will be happy, okay. And then on that same page, item sixty-five, I was trying to understand why that was not bid. When I read the attachment items, of which there were four hundred and sixty-four pages of attachment items, this appeared to just be a proposal from a carpet company instead of a bid? And I was trying to determine why it wasn't bid.
Council, this particular vendor did some work last year on carpets, so we're trying to stay within the same vendors, so we can have a matching carpet types that they provide.
They're the only vendor that provides carpet?
No, ma'am, they don't.
That matches ours?
No, ma'am, they don't. Everybody does, but we used that carpet manufacturer last year to install some carpet in different areas. We want to stay within the same type of carpet, so we just went to the same vendor and asked for a proposal.
Okay, but aren't we required by law to bid?
If it's over fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so it was forty-six, so I guess that was the deal. Okay, well, I wondered about that, and then I was going to ask respectfully if we could include the number of bids on every item that is bid? Because some of these, like on page twenty-one, item sixty-seven and sixty-eight and sixty-nine, none of them tell how many bidders there were. And you know, I'm kind of a stickler. I don't think we ought to bid and accept one bid. It just amazes me that more people don't want to bid with the city unless we're difficult to deal with. But anyway, if y'all could put the number of bidders on the agenda, it would be very helpful. Page twenty-two. Oh, that was another one, the number of bids. The Rotary Trail was another one on page twenty-two, the item seventy. It says we only got one bid for the Rotary Trail. Now, my recollection is the reason the Rotary Trail stopped is because the bid was too high and it exceeded the amount of money we had, or something to that effect.
That's correct, and we only bid and only got one bidder.
And we decided that his bid was reasonable for what he was doing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Then, item seventy-one on that same page, this is the Tiger Phase Six. And I noticed in those four hundred and sixty-four pages of attachments to our agenda that work in the city of Midfield is included. Was that just as information for us to see, or are we funding something in the city of Midfield?
We have responsibility for the entire trail, including the part that's in Midfield as well.
Because it's federally funded, or?
We're the grant, Andre?
Yeah, if you recall, Councilor, when we submitted the, our grant application, it was county-wise. But the city was the sponsor for that application and the grant.
Okay, thank you. Then on item seventy-two, that has not been to Budget and Finance. I have a lot of questions about that one. And item seventy-three, I think both of those were removed from consent. Thank you. Then on page twenty-three, item seventy-four, the video camera monitoring. Are we bidding that now? Or are we just extending agreements we've had in the past? I remember a big harangue under a previous mayor that said that it didn't have to be bid, but many of us thought it did.
I think this is in reference to when, you may recall, we took over certain operational expenses of Railroad Park. And this was one of the items that the city agreed to take over in terms of the operating cost of the facility. The contract was already in place.
Okay, so it's only through May thirty-first of this year, which is just three months, or three more months, I guess? Okay, so after that, we'll bid it out, or what will we do?
After that, it'll be bid.
Okay, then, thank you. Then on item seventy-six, I noticed that we had paid for the Sheraton three-room nights for a cities-of-service person at a hundred dollars and a little change a night. Then item seventy-seven, we have thirty-four room nights, and we paid two hundred and sixty-four dollars a night. And we still don't know who stayed in those rooms, except that there were some people who came in from out of town. And I guess I apologize, item seventy-seven is not on consent. But I just, the difference that we're paying, if the city's funding it, seems to me we should go with an economical choice. You know, if it was my money, I'd rather pay a hundred dollars a night than two hundred and sixty-four. So, then on page twenty-four, no, no, no. Thank you, Mr. President. I think I'm done.
All right.
Which one? Yeah, it can stay.
All right, are there any other council members wish to speak to consent agenda? Councilor Tyson, you said you had something.
Counsel Tyson, you said you had something running. You turn your microphone.
Sixteen and fifteen, we'll draw it.
Fifteen and sixteen?
Page, page, uh, one and nine and ten.
Page nine and ten. Let me see, fifteen was, uh... Item sixteen, let me see, I, I don't know about this, Mr. Clerk.
She's, they're, they're going to republish the information, so just going back through the whole process again. Because there was an interruption in the council meetings and the people weren't properly notified as far as the hearing.
Mr. Bitas?
Counsel, because we had a confusion about notifying the public, we have to re-advertise and that's shown on item eighty-one and eighty-two.
Okay, so you're, and so you all are...
Yeah, we're, we're resetting the public hearing.
All right, so you, so the mayor, you're going to withdraw fifteen and sixteen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
And also, um...
Eighty-one.
We're going to withdraw item. We're not, okay, never mind.
Okay, so fifteen and sixteen will be withdrawn. Counsel Tyson, are you done? All right. Counsel Scales?
Yes, sir, and that's why I was prompting the mayor by eighty-one, so eighty-one is also like a companion to fifteen and sixteen, is it not?
No. Eighty-one is setting a new public hearing for...
Okay, so then, if there are no objections, is it possible that we can put this item on consent?
We can, but we usually, Counsel Abbott likes to have it read.
If it's a public hearing, it needs to be read to the public. No, item number, not, no ma'am, item eighty-one doesn't say it's a public hearing, so is it?
What, what it is, is, is eighty-one and eighty-two are setting public hearings on April the twenty-eighth to reconsider these items that fifteen and sixteen, because we were not... Yeah, so they're, what we're doing is setting new public hearings because we didn't have council meeting last week, so we're just forwarding them for, um, for a month, basically.
I get it.
You done, Counsel Scales?
Well, and I was going to say, unless there's an issue, and normally it's not an issue in this area, item number twenty-four, excuse me, page twenty-four, item eighty, if we can add that to consent.
Object.
It's all on this president.
All right. Counsel Tyson?
I wanted to see if Mr. Bitas could explain, explain to council members on the scales, page fourteen, item thirty-four, if we can put it back on consent.
Yeah, and one, while you get into that, that's the Tittysville Community Framework Plan, I know that Budget and Finance voted to appropriate some money for the northeastern, what is it, Mr. Bitas, but you can...
Yes, sir, last week, the Finance Committee approved the funding for the eastern area framework plan and the southwest areas framework plan. He's going to show on the next week's council agenda.
Okay, because that was, what I was saying, counsel, I'm going to support it anyway, but I thought that that would be a wonderful opportunity to ask about the eastern area. Okay, so then with that having said, you said it'd be on the agenda next week?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, then it can remain on consent.
We took care of you in your absence, counselor.
Well, always take care of me, Mr. President, thank you, sir.
All right, that'll be placed back on consent. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda marked as a public hearing? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the consent agenda, speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. All right, Counsel Wood?
Yes, if we could pull off thirty-five off consent and, I'm sorry, page fourteen. And I see Mr. Cologne is here. I think we had a question about the stabilization and what, um, property is that we have identified with respect to the acquisition.
That's page eleven, item twenty-three. Page eleven, item twenty-three.
It's already off.
Kennox Community Development, that's just an appropriation of program income that has come in. And the acquisition and rehab is just the activity that HUD designates. So we have to appropriate it to that activity. There are no additional properties that we'll be purchasing with that, we'll just be finishing the houses that are under construction.
So you've already identified the houses, is what you're saying?
Sir.
Can you speak in my home?
You've already identified the houses?
Yeah, they're the houses that are under construction in the NSP program out in Pratt. And this is just appropriating the program income, when we close a house, it generates additional income and then we have to appropriate that. But that program income is what's used to finish the houses that are already under construction.
And what houses are they?
The new houses in Pratt on Hibernian and Trilby.
Okay, is this the one that Habitat took over and the other folks didn't finish?
Uh, the, these are two, just the two houses that are left on Trilby. But the program income that this is appropriating are for houses that were already built and closed.
So we have persons in them, is what I'm saying?
Yes, yes, this, this program income is generated from the actual closing of the house, the sale of the house.
I still like for it to stay off.
Okay, you have any more?
That was, that was it, and I want to share the same sentiments that Counsel Abbott has had about ION. They've been here for, for eons and it's time for us to get some more folk. And I'm just, you know, they, they've had a monopoly throughout this city and they have some other folk out there who need some opportunity as well.
Are there any other members who wish to speak to the consent agenda? We need a mover in a second.
So move, Mr. President.
Second.
Roberson Abbott.
All right, Roberson Abbott. Voting should be open now. How would you like to vote, Counsel Scales? I got you, you should, Chaz, you'll put her in and out now? You're okay?
I got it.
All right. That vote should be up. Mr. President?
All right, that item passes unanimously. Next item, Mr. Clerk, call up item twenty and item eighty-eight.
Item twenty, eighty-eight, eighty-eight is on the addendum. Okay, item twenty, and ordinance to amend the capital fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen by transferring one million five hundred thousand dollars from cosplay warm-up pool and appropriating one million five hundred thousand dollars to Regent's Baseball Stadium. And that was item twenty, and then next is item eighty-eight. Addendum item eighty-eight, uh, it's not here. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the city, the Public Athletic Culture and Entertainment Facilities Board of the City of Birmingham, Pace, P and G, C R D, Joint Venture LLC and Robbins and Morton A.G. Gaston Construction, under which the city will pay Pace and Pace will pay to Robbins and Morton A.G. Gaston Construction to design, build it for the Regent Field Stadium project on account of B and G, C R D, Joint Venture LLC, the developer of the project, the sum of four million one hundred thousand dollars payable as an initial payment of one million five hundred thousand dollars and six annual payments of three hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and thirty dollars each beginning on October the fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, and one final payment of three hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars as full and final payment of any and all amounts owed to or claimed by Robbins and Morton A.G. Gaston Construction with respect to the Regent Field Stadium project.
Mr. President? We need a mover in a second.
So move, second.
Lundey Parker, these items being recommended that we go into executive session to discuss. Judge Cook, you want to give us that?
Mr. President, members of the council, those two items involve a settlement relating to a controversy that has arisen in this matter and pursuant to Title Thirty-six, Chapter Twenty-five, A, Section Seven, Parin Three of the Code of Alabama, which authorizes executive sessions to discuss matters such as this. I request the council to go into executive session so that I can explain the rationale and the reasons for the recommendations and the potential, potential issues involved in this matter.
All right, do we have a mover in a second? Mr. President, I'd like to move that we go into executive session.
Sergeant.
Counsel Robinson Abbott, we have to do a roll call. Mr. Clerk?
Aye.
Okay, one second.
Roberson Abbott.
Referee.
Roberson and Abbott.
Abbott, I got you, thank you. Counsel Abbott says aye, Counsel Hoyt?
And Duda Blade.
Counsel Lundey?
Yes.
Counsel Parker?
Yes.
Counsel Referee?
Yes.
President Proton Roberts?
Aye.
Counsel Scales? Counsel Tyson?
President Offsley? Yes, we'll, we'll meet in Conference Room A and we'll reconvene at the call of the chair.
I'm going to go on saying. Bridget, send through that notice.
Have they changed?
Yeah, yeah, let me see. Okay.
Please.
What item is this they're meeting in the executive session? That's what I thought, you got to copy it in. I didn't know they were taking pictures though.
I didn't know.
Hold on.
Um, Karen, I think that's her name, Karen. She wanted to ask you, she asked me, but I don't know, I told her even though I'm calling out. She was wondering if you knew what this Regent's Stadium project is, that they're talking about in the executive session. She just wanted the one cent summary.
Lee, do you know what this Regent Stadium thing they're talking about? She just, one of the reporters wants the one cent summary.
I have no idea.
You don't have a copy of it yet, do you?
This is it right here.
Yeah.
No, this is not it, yeah.
But it is.
That's it.
Believe that there, because that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure they're all ready to discuss their way in the executive.
It's also like, you know, like it's not like, like- But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. But this is a situation where you have to, right, it's a big case. That's some love, man, I have to say, careful.
We ought to do that, Colin. For the, the decision, the decision. Oh. I see, Colin. Thought it was maybe on something else, not just, oh. I'm not. So it's good to go, we both today, we done.
Yep.
So you, yeah, I do more presentation. I was nothing to me, uh, this math stuff. Did you say that just?
Yeah, yeah.
You ever made any presentations or the? I mean, the mayor's presentation, but not council. Oh, the mayor's made his presentation. Yep. Just trying to see this. There's been one of the individuals over there. Yeah, sitting over there. When the mayor's there. I don't see anybody else in here. Everybody, uh, actually. See you. This should be what it left. That's on wrong. You sure? You sure about four? Well, I can do that. I wish I could repeat that, but I have no clue. They would have written on me.
They could get you like what happened. You don't have to know that. Yeah, she said she's a president. Later. My sister.
I, I wish I could repeat that, but I have no clue. I'm sorry. Can you get that?
Communication note.
You got it. Yes. I see that, yeah?
If, 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 uh, communication notes, and then go back a year.
Oh. Communicate from there? See, mayor, senior advisor for strategic initiatives. You sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I don't know about the, I don't know about the mayor, but I just put that in there.
Oh.
I assumed. That I was put on.
I got you. I thought it was some agency or something. As in how?
It's when he said he's still be, so I think he's still be working for him.
Where's my, come up on the?
Yeah.
We got kind of all, stay in that spot. Well, that's what I was thinking.
We should move this. They go there, uh, when I walk. Our president, we did kill them. Yeah, my fault.
Oh, yeah.
You all right, too? Yes, sir. You all right too? Yes sir.
Lee.
Yes sir. You know what your stuff is not going off? No.
Three twenty eight.
What, uh, order?
No, three thirty, it's a couple of orders.
And number one is order, you said? Number one.
Number one, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're taking progress. One thing is really gonna change is instead of doing the whole resolution, the item, the attention, only thing you're gonna tackle is the order. We'll have it, I want you to attach it, it's just like sending like two about you. Not the whole thing, you'll do the whole thing separately, or type it out and then attach it, you know how she was showing that little attachment, that's what you do, but you're just attaching it after that little thumb down, like you were normally, and then the cover painting, that, that, that's covering, and then you attach the actual resolution, the way she explained it, how we live, look for, look for everything. Yeah, yeah, you're, then you're uploading, so this is free up.
What if he's speaking, he's Tim, um, if he drops on us, I mean, what, or why can't you check for four hundred nine days, minus his Tim Murray?
No, I feel like I know what I'm talking about.
She's talking about the, the items that's on concern. The items that's on concern, see that.
That's an order, that's it. What about between that?
It's several. It's several.
No, okay, I need to count off. Well, first one would be one of those. Yeah, now it'd be.
Whatever that's, that's it, right?
Yeah, uh, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. First one would be eighteen, eighteen.
Whatever between that.
Yeah. Eighteen would be between eight.
Not all of them. Depends on where you. Depends on where you. Cause there's only ordinance or something, then yeah, plus some papers, other stuff, well, you just have to put it on the, uh, print. The department is, uh, tells me, the department tells us which paper they wanted money, and then, the only stuff, by code, is where you work, newspaper, this is type of, so it dictates how, or where, so we don't know until, we get the items, and then they tell us where it's supposed to be. So the item itself tells you, it needs to go in a newspaper that prints more than one time a week. Or prints weekly, or, or general circulation, whatever that definition is, so there's a lot of factors involved. There's a lot of factors. Yeah. Normally there is telecirculation. Sure, they get some of it, but it depends on, like I said, if they say.
And they also, they also.
So many times a week, then they only print once a week, that's one problem, on the end, yeah, they get some of it, but they don't, they don't get it to line here, because they don't fit over file, but we don't take tape, where it goes in the department, tell us where it comes from. Okay, you know, we get publications from all kinds of, every department in the city, they tell us which paper, we get a email. Well, they don't, they don't, they don't pay you, they don't even look at it, they look at what they're trying to, they don't look at which paper, I mean, because you know, they don't say three, basic states, so we have to go for another state, so we gotta follow that code. Right, they don't pay, that's not even a fact. Well, you gotta, but again, now, when people look busy, it depends on the quality, I mean, if there's no requirement on how many, yeah, they, yeah, they, yeah, they, I don't, I don't, we do, but. Yeah, we, they didn't talk about it, he, he, he said like he looked at it, but shut up, I, I, I don't make that any happen.
But I just heard.
Yeah, there's some, I, but it just depends on where you. And then most of the time, we look for the best banging for the book sometime anyway, so we will go there. And then most of the time, we can put a bit banging for the book sometime anyway, so we will go there.
Tell me you want to live. Thank you for being there. You, uh. Lost a car. You missed off this.
Oh, I don't look, sometimes it fits that. So what would that be? What would he know?
Well, you don't know where all the.
I mean, if, if he, if he called it up, after we do it, isn't it?
So much. Yeah. What, what, how is the plan? Is the new building, or is it sort of a?
Oh, the front is kind of. That's keep that red door.
I know, the, the two.
Let nobody buy plumbing supplies in water at that time. I walked right in, got where I wanted, walked right out. We're back over there, there was, there was suppliers, we put that boy in.
That's twenty seven or thirty seven.
But.
It's.
Thirty seven.
Hey, that's second, that he ain't paying it, okay. So actually, we'll take the number off, we don't. Just, just take the number off.
Right, see. Right.
First day.
Okay, uh, big, uh.
Well, now, a wrong question.
Brian, you ready? Okay. Mr. Clerk, you ready? You ready? Council meeting is called back to order, Mr. Clerk, I'm caller, oh, Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Hoyt.
Present.
Councilmember Lundey.
Here.
Councilmember Parker. Councilmember Rafferty. President Pro Tim Roberson.
Present.
Councilmember Scales.
Present.
Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
Present, thank you, we had item twenty, um, and eighty-eight, Mr. Clerk, that's back before us. Do we have a, do we need to make a motion, or can we make a motion on the item now?
Well, normally, we don't do it, should be tabled, then we put it back before, and all the motions go down on the table with it, so we still have the motion to pass it.
Right, so the motion, Councilboy, do you have a motion on these two items, we're gonna take both of them at the same time?
Motion is to delay this item for four weeks.
Second.
All right, Hoyt, uh, Roberson, for four-week delay on item twenty and item eighty-eight.
Okay, twenty. Ready to vote. And eighty-eight. How many weeks?
Four.
All right. Voting should be open.
It's on a four-week delay for items twenty and eighty-eight.
Councilmember Tyson. Uh, I, I got you out, I'm sorry, I, I got you in now. How'd you like, I got you. Okay. That vote should be up.
All right, those two items will be delayed, Mr. Clerk, call up item eighty, which is a travel item, and eighty-five.
Eighty and eighty-five?
Yes.
Okay. Item eighty, which is on page.
Twenty-four.
Thank you, sir. Page twenty-four, item eighty. A resolution approving advances Spencer Council City employees liquidity decayed, decayed administrative assistant officer of the mayor, Atlanta, Georgia, one thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. One second here. R. Scott Colson, administrative assistant officer of the mayor, Montgomery, Alabama, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-six cents, April sixth through eighth, two thousand and fifteen. To meet with Ukraine ambassador in Auburn University, Montgomery, Jarvis Patton, chief of operations officer of the mayor, Tampa, Florida, one thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty cents. April twenty-first through the twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend National Forum for Black Public Administrators, two thousand and fifteen Leadership Charting Decourse, Jarvis Patton, chief of operations officer of the mayor, Houston, Texas, one thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-one cents, May the twentieth through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend two thousand and fifteen National United States of America Fortyth Annual Conference on Neighborhoods. And what was the next one, I'm sorry?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, which is, uh, addendum item. A resolution approving the following advanced expense accounts, April, autumn, Director of Communications, Mayor's Office, Paris, France, four thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-four cents, March the seventeenth through the twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, to attend International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination.
All right, we have a mover and a second.
Second.
Parker, Roberson. Parker, Roberson.
Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. Voting should be open. Councilmember Hoyt, okay. That vote should be up.
That item passes, one no vote, Council Abbott, uh, call up item eighty-seven, Mr. Clerk.
Eighty-seven. Item eighty-seven. A resolution authorized the mayor to spend three hundred dollars for the purchase of cleaning supplies for the Northeast Lake Neighborhood Cleanup Day on March the twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen.
We have a mover and a second.
Second.
Abbott, Roberson.
Abbott.
Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. Voting should be open now. Councilmember Hoyt, Abbott. Councilmember Abbott. Thank you, that vote should be up.
That item passes, um, for while we're still back here, item eighty-one and eighty-two, Mr. Clerk. Let's just send a public hearing.
Item eighty-one. A resolution setting a public hearing, April the twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, to consider the adoption of a resolution extending to the vacation of six hundred and thirty-seven square feet of air rights in the First Avenue North Alley. That runs parallel to and between First Avenue North and Second Avenue North, and perpendicular to and between Eighteenth Street North and Nineteenth Street North, on behalf of Possess LLC, SWSGA Realty Incorporated, and new ideal LLC owners, so that a new crosswalk can be constructed, uh, from a parking deck to the Possess Building. Case number S U B two thousand fourteen, that's fifty-nine and eighty-two, on page twenty-five. A resolution setting a public hearing, April the twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, to consider the adoption of a resolution extending to the vacation of twenty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-six square feet of Powell Avenue. That runs parallel to and between Mars Avenue and First Avenue South, and perpendicular to and between Eighteenth Street and Nineteenth Street, on behalf of Alabama Power Company, owner, so the Alabama Power Steam Plant can be, uh, reinvented to support economic development in the city, case number S U B two thousand fourteen, that's sixty-seven.
All right, we have a mover and a second.
Second.
Abbott, Roberson.
Do we need unanimous consent on this?
No, we just said, uh, said a public, public hearing.
Voting should be open. Six, seven. Councilmember Tyson, thank you, that vote should be up.
That item passes, those public hearings will be set for the twenty-eighth of April, let's go back to beginning of the consent agenda, Mr. Clerk. Or the beginning of the council meeting, item one.
Item one. Item one, the non-issu-menting title twelve licenses and regulations chapter ten intoxicating liquids of the general code of the city of Birmingham nineteen eighty to designate the Uptown Entertainment District in the hearing of our supporters, and this is the second reading.
All right, Mr. Hoyt. Yeah, Ms. Bernard, you wanna call it?
I know it, yes.
Ms. Bernard, you wanna present this to us?
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. President, my mind is just.
Go ahead, Ms. Bernard.
Good, well, almost afternoon, councilors. This is the, um, ordinance to designate the first official entertainment district pursuant to the Alabama state law that authorizes entertainment districts where patrons are able to exit alcohol-licensed establishments with a beverage and mingle in the district. And, uh, this will be the first designation, it's the Uptown Entertainment District, which is already known as that, but this will authorize that operation for the alcohol licensees in the district. Birmingham Jefferson Civic Center Authority is the, um, the property owner, the landlord, uh, for the licensees in the area, and have submitted an application to operate the entertainment district. It will generally consist of the, um, uh, the part that's known as Uptown, will include the hotels, the Weston and the Sheraton, and will include the interior courtyard of the Civic Center complex itself, but will exclude things like the, um, Medical Forum and the, um, the Sports Hall of Fame and, and SEC headquarters and all of that. We do have, um, representatives from the BJCC here today.
I was just gonna ask if you could explain the contour of the, uh, of the area. And so you just.
Right, it's, it's going to include, as I said, the, um, the area that is now populated with the various restaurants and bars, um, the green space around that, it's gonna primarily exclude some of the public sidewalks. Some of the public sidewalks are going to be excluded, um, it will include the park, there's a little park area, green space there, and then it will continue down the street through, include, include the Sheraton and the Weston, where some of the licensees are located. And we'll cross twenty, that's Twenty-second Street, twenty, twenty-first, twenty-second Street, I'm sorry, I'm, um, I've got the map here, I don't know why I'm trying to talk off the top of my head. Um, that, um, to, which, well, Richard Arrington Boulevard, it will cross there and go on to, um, include the interior in between the exhibit halls and the theater and auditorium, but will not include the interior portions of the BJCC.
Very good. Anyone here wants to speak for the sign? This is a public hearing, if there's anyone to, uh, speak for against this item, you may do so now. If not, um, then I think. I'm sorry, okay, Ms. Abbott.
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest, I, I, I appreciate, Ms. Bernard, you sending us the map and all that other information, I've never seen so many attachments on one email in all my life. Um, but I appreciate you sending that to us ahead of time, but I wanted to ask respectfully that we designate this first district and let it go for a while, so we can iron out the bugs before we designate anymore. And I don't know whether anybody's even suggested anymore, but I would like to see us cool it for a little while, until we see how this all works out. So that when we do a second and a third and a fourth, and however many we're gonna do, we've already found all the places where it maybe doesn't work and needs to be fine-tuned, instead of having to reinvent the wheel all over town to fix our problems, because nothing's ever perfect when you do it the first time.
And I will mention, in, in going through this process, there may be some refinements that we want to do to the initial authorizing ordinance, you know, things that maybe when we initially sat down and talked about it were of great concern, you know, or now, it's like, well, that's not really, you know, as, as it came into the equation and talking about it, realistically, was not as big a concern, and, and some other areas that we might can, can tweak, but I think, you know, we've, it's, it's been a learning process with, with doing this and.
Because, you know, things like the signage, you know, the signage isn't gonna have the hours on it, the doors to the bars are gonna have the hours that it's effective, and we can change them if some special event comes, and we can invite other vendors in, and it just began to look kind of messy. But I realized we were trying to cover every possible thing that could happen. And I just am concerned that in the long run, we're gonna find out, maybe we should have done something different, I would just like to get all the bug, or as many bugs as we can, ironed out before we extend, expand it to other areas of town.
And I would say, in this circumstance, you mentioned about the, the flexibility on the hours, and, um, this is a unique situation that would probably not extend, because the BJCC has state authority to own that property and operate that property for the entertainment and, you know, cultural and social activities. So they have, they're in a unique situation, and it's one landlord, other districts within the city are going to be just sort of associations of various businesses. In this case, because we have a state-created agency, the BJCC Authority, and, um, and you have the one landlord, you know, controlling the tenants in the area. and, um, and you have the one landlord, you know, controlling the tenants in the area, felt that, that we could make some flexibility, they originally asked for greater hours, but after looking at it, um, the, the Civic Center, you know, made the request to have just the regular hours be limited, um, and then to be able to deal with other, um, uh, events that might happen a Monday or Tuesday, a large event, to be able to open it up. And again, it's because of the uniqueness of the position of the Civic Center Authority with their authority under state law that I felt that we could do that in this situation, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Yes, uh, Council Scales.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, let me ask you something, so... And again, I haven't been privy to these lengthy emails, okay? Uh, so, question for you is, is this dealing with that open, uh, Mr. President, you know what I'm talking about, it was like the open, uh, container that we pass, is this kind of dealing with that?
That's what this is, it's, it's, it's a scavenging...
So we finally at that point, that's why I was thinking to myself, like, I've heard this before. Okay, enough said.
Yeah, a few years ago.
Because now I see why Council, because she has a thriving Five Points South area that I'm sure that's going to come to. Okay, I get it now, I got it, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilor Roberson?
Uh, I appreciate, uh, the due diligence of the, uh, uh, law department, also Public Safety Committee. Uh, do remember the derivative of this whole process with Councilor President, uh, going to Montgomery and, and having discussions with the legislature about the, uh, open container legislation that's come forth now, and we're seeing that visible in a lot of different, uh, cities throughout the state of Alabama, so I'm, um, I was a little hesitant as a committee member at the time, uh, supporting this effort, but I've seen the productivity of uh, revenue generation in a lot of these entertainment districts throughout, uh, the state, uh, Montgomery in particular, uh, and other areas throughout, uh, uh, the state of Alabama. We've had a long, uh, executive session and a long council meeting, and I hope after we pass this, uh, legislation, uh, that, uh, we can go down and have a nice little lunch and an opportunity to utilize this great piece of ordinance that's coming forth before us today. But now, truth, seriously, this is great, uh, Uptown is very vibrant, uh, there are a lot of mentees down there, and I definitely think it gives us a hub of entertainment, uh, for all, uh, down at the, uh, BJCC and the Legacy Arena. Uh, so, thank you so much for your leadership on this, Council President, and, uh, Councilor Hoyt as chair of Public Safety to that committee, uh, for bringing this forth to us today, thank you.
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. President, if you allow me to speak before we bring this to a vote. Uh, but I do think we owe a, um, a bit of debt, uh, to you and your, uh, leadership on this. I just wrote down that one man plants, one waters, and another reaps the harvest. And so, um, even though I'm reaping the harvest, you, you planted and you watered. And so, uh, and now, Mr. Patton get a chance to take his Kool-Aid from one place to the other. And so, uh, so we, it's, you know, open containers, so, Kool-Aid and all, Council Scales, I know you don't... Fruit of the vine, fruit of the vine, but this is great and, uh, we appreciate your work. And we just want to see it grow, because I always, I feel this way about what is happening, um, in Uptown. If we get the people there, then it would necessitate us building a dome. And I think we're getting enough folk excited, uh, and continue to go down there, uh, got some wonderful restaurants, uh, that even I occasionally would partake. And, um, and so I really enjoy the, just the atmosphere of, uh, being downtown, uh, and I hope others will get just as excited as I am and others, uh, will respect to that. So, uh, we want to build that dome, so we just need folks, more folk to go down there with their Kool-Aid cup, and so we can grow. And so, um, let's do that, and Mr. President, I turn it back over to you, sir.
All right, ready to vote, Mr. Clark?
Okay, get a motion on that.
I move approval.
Abbott Roberson.
All right, voting should be open. All right, I got you, Council Rafferty. Councilmember Tyson is out. That vote should be up.
That item passes unanimously, next item.
Should be item fifteen, which is asked, be requested to be withdrawn, as well as item number sixteen.
Correct. Item seventeen.
And so we'll be at item seventeen next, which is on page ten. A resolution approving payment to Drapery Specialist Montgomery, Alabama, in the amount of ten thousand dollars to provide exterior architectural lighting for the Demeritted National Convention Review Team on July the twenty-first and the twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen, according to section three dash one dash seven of the Birmingham City Code.
Need a mover in a second.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Abbott Parker, you have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we send this to the next Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
Second, all right.
On the twenty...
It's being moved to be referred, so just going back to Budget and Finance.
Seventeen.
Okay, all right, we have a mover in a second, Mr. Clark, ready to vote on referring that to, um, Budget and Finance.
Okay. B and F. Voting should be open. That vote should be up. That vote should be up.
That item is referred to Budget and Finance, next item should be twenty-three.
Item twenty-three. An ordinance to amend the grant fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen by appropriating thirty-nine thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars and one cent to Neighborhood Stabilization Program, NSP three fiscal year two thousand and ten acquisition rehab and twenty thousand dollars for Neighborhood Stabilization Program, NSP three fiscal year two thousand and ten administration funding sources, program income received, and resolution number three sixty-two dash fourteen.
You have a mover in a second?
Mr. President, I move approval.
Abbott Parker.
Abbott Parker.
Um, Mr., uh, Mr. Hoyt, you had a question about the housing, and, and you, your question specifically was, um, have they identified housing in what area and which housing, and Mr. Cologne is here now, I know we had some response earlier, but Mr. Cologne is here responding to it. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So, so just to clarify, thi- this is program income that's coming back to us? And we're just reallocating those funds back under the NSP program, this is not to purchase...
So this replenish?
Yeah, mhm.
Okay.
For future use.
I understand that. That's great, let's move.
All right, we have any other speakers to this item? Ready to vote, Mr. Clark?
Voting should be open. Roberson out, Lundy's out. That vote should be up.
That item passes, next item.
Should be twenty-nine.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. One second, let me delete twenty-five, we had it, already highlighted.
Yeah, twenty-five is, and just for the council's...
Right, I took it off.
Information, um, twenty-five is a ordinance of permanent operation, so we'll have to have unanimous consent for us to take it up today.
Item twenty-five. An ordinance to establish a city of Birmingham tax tribunal hearing officer to administer city of Birmingham tax appeals as established in the code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, title forty, chapter two B, section one, this is the first reading.
All right, we need a mover in a second.
Mr. President, I move approval.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
All right.
All opposed, that's you.
All right, okay, we're going to move the item.
Can I speak now?
Yeah, we need a motion, remove item again.
Second.
Okay.
Rafferty, Lundy, all right, Council Hoyt?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm just, um, I, I think this is great, to have a tribunal, um, hearing, and I'm just wondering, um, if the chair of Budget and Finance of one of those persons from that committee would serve on that tribunal?
I'm not an attorney.
I don't think you have to be attorney.
Yeah, the next... There's a companion item appointing the guy who's going to do it, he's an attorney.
Okay. I thought we'd at least have a layperson on, on that.
Do we have someone that can speak to that from the Law Department?
Good afternoon, Yolanda Lawson from the Law Department. Councilman Hoyt, um, the tax tribunal is actually a member of one right now. It's, the requirement is that we have a tax tribunal hearing officer.
Okay.
So it's not a panel.
Okay, all right, that explains it, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I wanted to ask, now, I understand the reason that we did this, we voted some time ago not to go with the states because we'd be driving up and down the highway to Montgomery, but can any of the small municipalities around us use hours instead of driving to Montgomery? I mean, is there any kind of, uh, reciprocal kind of, or, deal with any of the others who may not want to drive to Montgomery?
Well, Councilwoman Abbott, that is a possibility, but currently there's only eight municipalities within the state of Alabama that chose to opt out.
Oh, okay.
And it was the larger municipalities, an example would be Tuscaloosa. There was some, uh, some municipalities in southern Alabama that chose to opt out because of the same reasons.
Distance.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Mr. Clark, we're ready to vote.
Okay. Voting should be open. Councilmember, none, okay, got you, thank you. That vote should be up.
That item passes, next item.
Should be item twenty-nine.
Yep.
A resolution authorized the mayor to execute a collection service agreement with Amshare Collection Services Incorporated, under which Amshare will prosecute collection services in Territory Nine for delinquent tax collection accounts for a term of one year and a fee of thirty percent of collections of Territory Nine accounts placed by the cities.
All right. We have a mover in a second.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Abbott Lundy, um...
My name is up.
Councilwoman Abbott?
Yeah, we were going to have somebody come and explain Territory Nine to us.
Again, Yolanda Lawson from the Law Department. Um, Territory Nine is defined as businesses that are located outside the city of Birmingham. However, they have a nexus or relationship inside the city of Birmingham that generates a business license or the necessity of a business license.
Okay.
So those are...
Because when I read it, I didn't exactly get that, and I knew that I wasn't real clear, and I wanted to make sure I was before we voted, so Amshare will be searching for those people who are doing... So they're doing business with businesses in Birmingham.
Or providing a service to a business in Birmingham, and they should be paying a business license to the city of Birmingham, but unfortunately it's, you know, very difficult to police all of the businesses, so Amshare is going to come in and help us identify those businesses as well as collect all of the taxes that are due to the city of Birmingham.
Well, it sounds very difficult to me, so I understand why they're getting thirty percent of the deal, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we're ready to vote, Mr. Clark.
Okay. Voting should be open. Councilmember Tyson. That vote should be up.
That item passes, next item.
Should be item thirty-five.
Right.
Item thirty-five, a resolution authorized the mayor to sign an appointment letter and to execute a service agreement with National Asset Preservation Commissions for the total sum of seven thousand dollars for NAPC to perform a one-day commission assistant mentoring program, training for the members of the Birmingham Historical Commission Design Review Committee, payable, payable from city funds that will be reimbursed to the city by a grant from Alabama Historical Commission in the amount of seven thousand dollars to be matched in income with services provided by staff valued at one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. President, I move approval.
I have a question.
Abbott Parker, Councilwoman Hoyt?
Yes, let me ask, with, with the new language that we're using respect to, um, how we dispense city monies and being that this is not, not necessarily going to benefit the public, it's just individuals, how is this different than what we are being told about discretionary?
Melissa Smiley from the Law Department, um, I think I heard your question was, how do we, how are we engaging in this arrangement in light of the advice we've been getting about discretionary spending? The funds that are being expended...
Public funds, just say, public funds, because that's what they said, uh...
Um, the funds, this is described as using city funds, however, the city of Birmingham is a recipient of a grant, and the, the sole purpose of that grant is to provide this training.
Okay.
And it's my understanding that NAPC is the only entity that provides the training, so the council has authorized us to accept the grant, now we're going to follow up on the things we said we would do in receiving that grant, so...
All right, thank you, Ms. Smiley.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ready to vote, Mr. Clark? That's a good question. Ready to vote?
Just for the record, uh, on the tax tribunal, we did an RUC, correct?
Yes.
Right. Voting should be open. Uh, Councilmember Roberson is out, okay, that vote should be up.
That item passes, next item.
Should be item number thirty-six.
Item thirty-six.
A resolution approving appointment with Building and Earth Sciences Incorporated Birmingham in the amount now to receive fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to provide subsurface exploration and geotechnical services for the sports field lighting project and authorizing the mayor to execute the appointment on behalf of the city.
All right, we need to move in a second.
Move the item, Mr. President.
Second.
Roberson, Abbott. Um, you have any speakers today on, Councilwoman Hoyt?
Yes, I just wanted to know, um, what sports field lighting, I mean, what, what field is this?
Counselor, these are various fields, uh, city parks, and they can include, um, Aggie Gaston, Fairmont, Grayson...
You said the right thing, you don't need to go no further, that's why I wanted to know. Mrs. Protem?
Mr. Hoyt, I'm glad he said the right thing, and I, I want to hear the rest of the list, if you don't mind, Mr. Bettis, thank you.
Yes, sir, uh, Aggie Gaston, Fairmont, Grayson, Green Acres, Larry, Macklin, and Stockholm.
Thank you, um, this is something that's been needed for a long time. And, um, um, I'll be honest with you, I mean, Co- Councilor Hoyt has been an advocate for lighting, period, but the parks and the sports fields that our kids are now participating on throughout our city and youth sports, a lot of them are not lit properly. And you'd be amazed what, uh, the headlights on a car can do, uh, for football or baseball practice at night. So I'm glad to see this coming forth, and I know it's just, um, fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, uh, but we need to, for, to, to explore, you know, exploration for this process, but there are many parks across this city that our kids and, and our youth coaches and youth sports programs, uh, need support and, and, uh, and actually just practicing in a situation that's, that's, uh, amenable to their sport. So I know Kevin Moore and, and, and our council partner, who's, uh, Chair Park and Rec, has been talking about this, and I'm just glad to see this exploration, uh, come forth, and I know we will need, uh, not just those parks listed, but, uh, more parks throughout the city, uh, to benefit our sports programs, thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ready to vote, Mr. Clark? Oh, Council Scales, I see your, I didn't see your name on it.
Yes, sir, do we have, um, like, a breakdown, I'm going to support the item, but, uh, do we have a breakdown of what, uh, to expect at these parks, meaning like how much lighting, that kind of thing? You know, because I, I heard what I needed to hear too, but I want to be very specific so we can share that information with the community.
Counselor, I don't have the number of, uh, sports fields lighting in each park, but we have that and we can get that to you in an email, I don't have it with me right now.
Okay, but you do have that information, Mr. Bettis?
Yes, yes, ma'am, it's in the report, but I'll send that to you, and, uh, but these are, you know, parks that we are replacing ballfield lighting, you know, with concrete poles, so... I'll give that number to you.
Right, because I thought that was, especially for Grayson, I thought that that was a part of the bond project.
It is.
Okay, so is that a carve-out of the money that was allocated from the bond project, or is that in addition to?
Yeah, each, each, each park has several work items we're working on, and one of them is ballfield lighting, but there's other things going on in the park.
So is that money that's coming from, deducted from the bond money?
Correct.
Yeah, well, Mr. Bettis, then respectfully... Yeah, well, Mr. Bettis, then respectfully, uh, Mr. President, then I'm going to ask if you can get that to me by the end of the week, because I know that, uh, the president of that Kilos Springs community would want to know, and I don't want to misrepresent the city. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, we're ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
Alright, voting should be open. Uh, that vote should be up.
That item passes, next item, Ms. Clerk.
Um, what do we got?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. Item thirty-seven, a resolution approving the appointment with Leadership Call LLC, Fisco Texas, in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy dollars to service an EQ certification trainer for Project Safe Domestic Violence Intervention Program for six social workers and authorize the mayor to execute the appointment on behalf of the city.
Mr. President, I move approval.
You have a second?
Second.
Abbott, Rafferty, you have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to.
Question to the motion, Mr. President. I, I thought, has this been through your committee?
No, but we have to get it on the floor before I can make a motion to move it to the committee.
You're absolutely right, Counsel, thank you.
I got caught one time, so, um, but I would like to make a motion that we send this to the next Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
Abbott, Lundey? Motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
B and F. Our vote should be open now.
And, I know we're voting.
Just to refer it to the committee.
That vote should be up. Vote should be up, Mr. President.
That item passes, it will be referred to Budget and Finance, Finance, next item should be item sixty-four.
Sixty-four, which is on page twenty-one. Item sixty-four, a resolution to accept the bid of Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Alabama, Birmingham, and approve the purchase of medical benefits administrative services at unit prices on file in the Office of the Purchasing Agent for a term of one year effective July the first, two thousand and fourteen, with the option to extend term of agreement for two additional one-year periods, subject to the availability of funds from the Department of Human Resources, and this language should be added in the synopsis, and authorize the mayor to execute any necessary documents on behalf of the city, and, and authorize the mayor to execute any unnecessary documents on behalf of the city.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second, Abbott, Roberson, Councilor Hoyt, you had a question, wasn't it?
Which, which one is this?
There was a question about, um, Mr. Stanley.
Oh, sixty-four, yes, we need to send this to a committee.
Mr. Stanley, I believe there was, um, there was an issue about, can you speak to this item?
Uh, yes, I can, I've, I've worked on the contract itself, uh, the council may recall that the city's pa- practice in the past was, uh, provide, giving out the contracts without going through a bid process. That was challenged in this last round, and a, uh, circuit court judge found that the city had to bid the contract. So the, the contract was put out for bid, Blue Cross was the low bidder, we've been working out the details of the contract with them for some time now, the judge is putting pressure on the city to produce a final signed contract at the risk of being held in contempt of court, so that's why we're trying to advance that now. This contract has nothing to do with the amount that employees or retirees pay for health benefits. This is for the administrative services, the overall administration of the, the health insurance by the, by Blue Cross on behalf of the city, so it has nothing to do with the amount that we pay as employees or retirees pay.
Yeah, right.
That's separate.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Stanley, Councilor Hoyt?
I would, I would still would want this to go to committee, because I need to understand what are the terms of those agreements, and perhaps that you could delineate them, uh, to the committee. Uh, you know, I, you know, that's why we have a benefits committee, to understand, um, uh, the terms of the contract, and what are you asking the city to sign on, this is just a synopsis, but, uh, but I think the way we do this, and you'll find that I'm not opposed, I just need to understand, and when I understand, I can support. Okay, and so I'm asking respectfully that we refer this to the, uh, to the benefits committee, and so we get some understanding.
Mr. Stanley?
Again, we're, we're under some pressure from the court and for the party who brought the lawsuit to produce a contract. I, I can't give you any assurance that if we delay this, the court will, will find us in contempt or try to cite us and ask.
Y'all come up with this stuff every week, come on, please. Now, we're, we're charged to do our due diligence.
But then, you know, the, the, well, the court, the court's order is one.
We're, we're charged to do our due diligence, and the judge doesn't, he doesn't run this.
Yes, he does.
He doesn't ru- he doesn't run City Hall, he'd run the courtroom. And I, you know, and y'all, y'all flip it every, every week, y'all got a new, uh, uh, thing that y'all do with, with, uh, depending on who it is and, and what company it is. That's the purpose of having the committee, is that we apply to due diligence, this is not different in any other contract, and one week delay is not going to, um, uh, be in contempt of the, of the judge's order. He didn't say you had to do it today, at this hour. And generally, the order is very specific. And we hadn't seen any of that. Y'all must, you know what, this Law Department, I'm, you know what, you know, you know, you can write to the bar association for some of this stuff.
Hold on, Count, Mr. Penn, go ahead, are you done?
I'm done.
Councilor Hoyt, um, you, you're, you're done, you say again, alright.
Well, have anything to do with you, Mr., uh, because I know you do what you told.
Stanley, Mr. Penn?
Mr. Chairman, number one, uh, it's, it's, I don't think it's appropriate for a, a council member to sit there and thread my employees with going to the bar. They have a fiduciary responsibility.
I can speak whatever I want to speak.
No, you can't, no, you can't.
Hold on, Mr. Hoyt.
No, sir, you cannot.
Counselor Abbott?
The Chairman?
Are you done?
I haven't finished, no, no, sir, I'm not.
Go ahead.
I think we've heard from our attorney, our legal advisor, you've heard from two attorneys this morning. We've got some pressing, pressing issues that are before us. We don't have a problem with bringing the information to the committee at its next regularly scheduled meeting, Mr. Chairman, but we'd like to move forward on this. I'm finished, sir.
Alright, Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, and I just wanted to ask a question, now, um, the one thing, when we get these copies, sometimes we can't read them because they've, they've colored the headers, and then by the time it gets PDFed, they're unreadable. It looks, on item sixty-four, the backup, it looks like we're going to be paying Blue Cross, Blue, Blue Shield twenty-two dollars a month for administration of our medical plan, is that accurate?
Twenty, I think that's twenty dollars per.
Per person.
Per person, per case.
Yeah, per, 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 per employee.
Yes.
So every month we pay that whether a person uses the healthcare or not, it's just they're sitting on ready. And the other guys, it looks like they bid twenty-eight ninety-five and twenty-nine dollars per month, per employee. So I'm surprised that Blue Cross, Blue Shield was so much less expensive than the other guys were. And then is that all that we're paying, I realize that y'all asked them for pricing for an additional two years, and they gave those percentage increases.
Right.
Um, so we'd get up to twenty-three dollars by, by year three. But when y'all send these things to us, if you could take the colored parts and turn them some other color so when they're copied, we can read them, because it's just very difficult, so thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor Hoyt, your second time? Yeah, let, let, let me be clear, uh, Mr. Stanley, you are a fine attorney, had nothing to do with you, you doing what you've asked, been asked to do by the administration, I do understand that. And all I'm saying is, you know, we get to flipping in terms of what we do, uh, and what we have asked to be, to do. All I'm saying, I need to understand the terms of agreement, I don't understand them. And that's the purpose of the committee, to ask the questions. Now, if, if this council just want to continue to pass stuff, and you don't understand it, but I need to understand it as the, as the chair of that committee. I need to understand that, and there, there are other things aside from what we pay individually that, that, uh, that is inside this contract. And I want to be able to sit down with attorney and ask questions. But we can't do it here, and we wouldn't even be discussing this now if it had come through my committee, quite frankly. And, Mr. President, and it's been your spirit of late to send it through the committee. And that's all I'm asking.
The, Counselor Scale, see?
Thank you, Mr. President, and then I would have to agree, um, I don't believe that a week would harm anything, but more importantly, uh, Mr. President, um, a part of the new paradigm is the fact that, uh, we, we used to didn't have to do, uh, public purposes through the Budget Committee and a screenshot with it. And we used to have to do a lot of things, but it's a new order now, and it's no throwout to any council member at all as much as, I don't think that we should have differences where one is simply asking for respect and gets it, and then another just having to almost plead with the council to be considerate. So all I'm asking, uh, of this council, because I can tell there's another conversation going on, is that, uh, Mr. President, if, um, or Mr. Protem, or whoever's listening at this point, uh, if, if, you know, when we know that things are time-sensitive, to me, it works at a disadvantage to the council. We just talked about this about thirty minutes ago, it works to the council's disadvantage uh, for us to have, uh, information that may become time-sensitive. And being that, uh, because there was an issue that came up legally a year ago, even though some folks said that they don't have good memories, Counselor Scale's got an excellent one, and I keep telling folk, make that work for you and not against you. It was just a year ago, we were in the newspaper talking about insurance and what wasn't properly bid it out. That's why it's so important for us to be able to stop being so rushed to judgment-type things on this day is when we know that things are being required of us, we want to be responsible to the taxpayers, and therefore, to be responsible, hopefully, none of us would make decisions about our personal business on a whim, and that we wouldn't wait until it became the last day or the last moment, twelfth hour, to make a decision, because that's normally not the best time to make a decision, not a good one, anyway. So that's, I, I agree with the chair from that regard, Mr. President, that if you recall, it was just a year ago, we were dealing with just that. And, uh, and so, out of respect, not only for just the chair of public safety, each committee chair wants it to go through their committee, we've been sending things to committee all morning, and I would hope that we would, we would continue on in that spirit, you're only asking for a week delay, just a week.
Well, we need two.
Two weeks, even if a two-week delay, just for respect for that committee process. I think everybody can agree with that, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we, uh, have a two-week delay.
Oh, wait a minute, hold on, before we accept your motion, I think Counsel Rafferty.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Had her name up, and then, Mr. Penn?
Thank you, um, I have the order on motion for preliminary injunction before me because I was involved in this case, and, um, the, the decision was actually made while I was still representing, uh, Counselor Austin on this committee. The committee itself is actually, um, defunct in that the way that the code is written concerning the code doesn't exist anymore, the application of it, so it's a struggle to find a place for the committee to serve a purpose, because as it is now, the committee does not make the decision on who we contract with, the committee's more, um, focused on what the city puts in place as far as premiums, um, and other costs, and that's usually the debate that's before the committee at this point. The contract itself, the court order went into effect October eleventh of two thousand and thirteen, which means we've kind of been struggling with this to be in compliance with the court per, um, and we were given six months to comply, which we did. The issue that was before us last summer that created all the brouhaha had nothing to do with the contract between the administrator and the city, it had to do with what the city had decided the premium costs and the deductibles were going to be, which is totally separate from the contract of the adminis- uh, who is, who's administering the policy. And, um, Mr. Patton, you can correct me if I'm not representing that correctly, but what is before us now is just the administration of the policy, the Health and Benefits Board's purpose at, that's vaguely referenced in the code, is that they need, that the employees on that benefits board, as well as the council, are negotiating those benefits, the, the, um, percentage of, of payment between the employees and the city. Thank you.
The administrator, I think Mr. Patton had his name up.
I got mine up too.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Rafferty for being so clear.
But it's not the phone.
To me, with respects to what's going on and the rest of your colleagues, uh, we simply ask, and we have no problem, uh, Counselor Hoyt, with meeting with your committee today, tomorrow, or the next day, but this item needs to be moved forward, it's plain and simple. Would you please allow the administration to perform its duties? That's all we're asking. We can meet, we'll meet with you anytime you call a meeting, but would you please allow the administration to perfor- perform its duties, sir? Thank you.
Uh, move to delay for two weeks.
Second.
You want to speak, Counsel?
Yeah, I mean, but I know you got a motion on the floor.
We do, this is moved improperly, second, you ready, you can speak to the motion.
Well, no, I, I, Mr. President, I, I have a comment that doesn't relate to, that's not germane to the motion.
Because here's what I was about to say, with all due respect, Counselor, you sit on that committee, and I would tend to think that if your chair is not anymore? Okay.
She was, in the previous.
But it worked for her.
Okay, so, okay, because I was about to say, if you got the chair of the committee that only wants to be informed.
We go through this.
Then, I, I just, I still don't get that, and I don't.
Counselor, there's a motion on the floor.
Well, that's what I just said, Mr. President. You're right, Captain.
And she's not on the committee, so the counselor made a motion, and he's.
Okay, I, I'm through, that's why I didn't want to start talking, I said, Mr. President, I said, it, it wasn't germane, okay.
Ready to vote on the delay?
Voting should be open. How, how many weeks with it? Two weeks? Councilmember Abbott?
Counselor Abbott?
Alright, that vote should be up.
That item passes, two no votes from Abbott and Roberson, uh, next item, Ms. Clerk.
Next item number?
Two, I mean, four, oh, I'm sorry, Rafferty. Next item, Ms. Clerk.
That should be item number?
Seventy-two and seventy-three.
Okay, item seventy-two and seventy-three.
That, that item passes, it's been delayed two weeks, next item, Ms. Clerk, seventy-two and seventy-three.
A resolution approving payment to Enterprise Holdings for rental of eight sport utility vehicles for five days in an amount of four thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty cents for the Human Rights Conference in cities for service events, March sixth, two thousand and fifteen, in accordance with section three dash one dash seven of the Birmingham City Code. Item seventy-three, a resolution approving payment to Enterprise Leasing Company South Central, doing business enterprise rental car for short-term rental vehicles as needed for the period ending September thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, based on bid awarded contract by the state of Alabama, contract number forty-eleven four oh five, T number, T one ninety-one R.
We have a mover and a second for seventy-two and seventy-three.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
Abbott, Roberson.
Now, I would also like to make a motion to send this to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Abbott, Roberson, a motion to refer to Budget and Finance, item seventy-two and seventy-three, ready to vote, Ms. Clerk?
Okay, one second. Voting should be open. Um, that vote should be up.
That item passes, one no vote, um, from Councilor Hoyt, next item?
Should be item seventy-seven.
Those two items will be referred to Budget and Finance.
A resolution approving payment to the Western Birmingham for the hotel accommodation inclusive thirty-four room nights for participants speaking at the city of Birmingham's sponsored Human Rights Conference at the Birmingham Museum of Art, March sixth, two thousand and fifteen, in an amount not to exceed nine thousand dollars, in accordance with section three dash one dash seven of the Birmingham City Code.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All right, we have a motion and a second. A mover and second?
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
Abbott, Parker. All right. Any speakers? Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk?
Okay, one second. Okay, voting should be open now. Councilmember Abbott. That vote should be up.
All right, that item passes, two no votes from Hoyt and Abbott. Next item?
Should be item eighty-four. In order to amend the general fund budget by appropriating one million, ten thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and six cents to non-departmental transferred to Fund One O Two Capital Improvement Fund, and amend capital fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, by transferring one hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents from Oxmoor Valley School Access Improvements, one million, one hundred thousand dollars from Chutlesworth Vehicle Pedestrian Bridge, one million, one hundred thousand dollars from Cotton Avenue Street Realignment, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-six cents from Crossplex Harris Arena, eight hundred thousand dollars from Crossplex Warm-Up Room, and appropriate five million dollars to Intermodal Facility.
Have a mover and a second? You have a second on item eighty-four?
Second.
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, Parker, Hoyt, um, Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, um, this is not what we agreed to in Budget and Finance slash Economic Development Committee meeting on Thursday. What we agreed to was to take funds from the Birmingham Fund with a commitment to pay them back when the bond, bonds are sold in, at the end of the year. So, you know, obviously, I can't vote for this because it's not what we agreed to. Yeah.
Well, I ask that you would delay the item one week and we will come back with the Birmingham Fund, and we will also get with Bond Council to make sure we comply with the IRS regulations.
Okay, well, Mr. President, if, if it's appropriate at this time, I would move for a one week.
Okay.
Well, then I'll, I'll withdraw until they're finished.
Okay, before we move forward with your motion, we do have two council members, Counselor Hoyt and Counselor Tyson want to speak, but if Counselor Abbott is making a motion to delay it one week, we can say, save our comments till next week.
Well, this is something I want you to consider while you wait.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Yeah.
Well, I just want to, uh, just want you all to consider, uh, finding another eight hundred thousand dollars that y'all taking from Crossplex, uh, because we need everything we can get. Have you looked out there lately? It's dark. You know, the grass, uh, probably need to be cut in a few days. So, we need our money, Mr. Patton. We need it. Yes, I know it's the pool. This ain't for the pool.
Counselor Tyson, did you have something?
Oh, this is for the pool. Oh, yeah, you better go on and pass that.
Get you some better glasses.
I know, I'm- The executive session just threw me off.
Go ahead, Counselor Tyson.
It's taking money from the pool.
It's taking from the pool.
But it's not for lighting or grass cutting, it's for the pool.
You, and he wants us to stay. Counselor Tyson?
Well, I could, I could wait and save my comment because I'm, I just wanted to, you know, I'm voting no on it because of the way, where are you getting the funding from?
Yeah, just save it for next week. We'll talk about it next week. I like your T-shirt. All right, we're ready to vote on, um, a one-week delay. Do we have a motion for a one-week delay? Sorry, Counselor Abbott.
Yes, I'm, I'm moving for a one-week delay.
They getting this to-
Abbott and Lundy.
Mr. President, but in the event that, you know, if I don't make it to Budget and Finance at that particular time, uh, if we had anything, any comments related to the item?
We're not taking, we're just delaying it one week.
No, no, no. I said, you're delaying, oh, okay, so you're delaying only one week.
We're not referring to, they're just a one-week delay.
Due to?
They've got to find some, I think you were off the desk when we were talking about it, but basically they-
Oh, I was listening about the funding sources and one of them being fund balance.
They need to go, they need to change the funding source from fund balance to Birmingham Fund, and, uh, and, and Counselor Hoyt and Counselor Tyson had concerns about some of the source of funding. It's about two million dollars in funding that they had concerns about, which they have asked the administration to consider finding other sources.
And, and Mr. President, don't forget the agreement-
And the agreement is there at the end.
-that we pay the money back to the Birmingham Fund when the bonds are sold.
This is just a week delay.
Okay, okay, because that was going to be my question too about payback.
And we, and I-
We always have to pay back.
Right, and I asked, um, that the council members just hold their comments to next week because it's going to come right back up anyway.
Okay, then I respect that. All right.
We have a mover and, we had a motion on the floor for a one-week delay. And Counselor Scales was speaking to the motion. Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Voting should be up. Councilmember Scales and Lundy.
Counselor Scales?
That vote should be up.
All right, that item passes for a one-week delay. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, speakers are holding new business.
Ready to move to suspend the rules for our speakers?
So, move.
Have a second?
All in favor, let it be known by saying I, all opposed.
First speaker?
W.A. Casey.
Mr. Casey? State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Counselor. I'm Willie Casey. I'm at nine forty-one Hill Street West.
Yeah, speaking to the microphone.
Apologize. Good morning, Counselor and President. I'm Willie Casey. I'm at nine forty-one Hill Street West, and my concerns is, there's a plan called Western Area Community Framework Plan. I think it's a good plan, but the plan is like, you know, in a football game, the coach and only quarterback know the plan. The plan is not that beneficial to the team. I think the team here is, believe, between the faith-based ministries and the relatives. In our community, most of y'all know that when the preacher says congregation believes and they were trusted, that's where we communicate. Uh, most citizens don't have the knowledge of property value zoning and stuff that most of you all have. So, I'm strongly recommending that, on which probably pull off, we, we, the mayor, and mayor's not here, but his assistants over there, that if you recall, the faith-based ministries, like the AOH, the CME, the, um, AME, the Baptists, different faith-based ministries, and the relatives and the riteurs, get them together. I think you got, and ha- ask them to sell the community, at least have five thousand people down to bow our auditorium. Now, you've got ten thousand people that have been infest- that have been affected with the knowledge of this program. If you get five thousand, hopefully they'll tell at least one person. Then you got a plan, because I think when the, uh, World Games come here, we need to know that y'all helped plan for the land. And I think a lot of people don't know about it. I know we've done, they've had twenty meetings, but, uh, I've talked to people. Most of those know nothing about the plan. Most preachers know nothing about the plan. One other thing, the plan has, uh, talking about affordable housing. In my opinion, as a thirty-five-year relative, we, we have, most of Birmingham have affordable houses. We need to build some bigger houses to pull the value of our properties in our communities. Uh, secondly, is that on the land bank program, I think it's a good program, it's needed, but I think we need help twelve-month time where any blood relative or any person attached to their property can buy it back for the same price that the public can buy it for. Reason being is that if, if, if I have not read the plan, John Rogers say he'll give me the plan to me, but my understanding that the bill hasn't that, uh, past blood relative can buy the property, if you pay all the damages, which is the liens and stuff. Well, say the liens come twenty-eight thousand dollars. He can't buy it for twenty thousand dollars and go build a house because that's equity been, been lost. But if it's selling the same price that the city that you, no, if it's sold at the same price that you're going to sell it to the public for, maybe seven thousand dollars, that makes a good deal for everybody. I think he has more interest in the property than anybody else.
Your time's up, Mr. Casey. Can you wrap it up?
Yeah. Thank you, that's one more, sir. Thank you. Appreciate you taking your time.
All right.
And if you get the mayor to call somebody, call the board, the ril- the relatives, relatives, and the preachers get them together to see what this plan here, I think it'd be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Uh, Linda Ray.
Ms. Ray? Linda Ray? All right. Next speaker?
Willie Jenkins.
Knew he was next on the list. Mr. Jenkins? Got a shirt you got for the mayor, Mr. Jenkins?
Uh, no, this is a shirt, um, City, City Council and the mayor, this is a shirt men of praise going to wear.
State your name and address.
Willie Jenkins is from, uh, sixteen twenty, twenty-fifth Avenue North. To the mayor of City Council and the City Council, we are going to be singing at Mount Heaven Baptist Church. We're going to be wearing this shirt and tie. I'd like to invite all y'all to come to Hill Saint. Chief Poli, Chief John Johnson's going to sing with us, and I want to invite all y'all to come this coming Sunday. And also, we are planning on going to Montgomery, Coach Jeff, in the Hall of Fame, going to be on the twenty-third. And so, anybody want to go to, uh, Montgomery, please call Barbara Gallin, nine six oh twenty-eight ninety-five. We be leaving on the twenty-third, um, twenty-third, um, March in the Hall of Fame. So, I will be going, I'll pay my forty dollars. I will be going to Montgomery to, call Coach Jeff. He won the state championship, and, uh, you know, he, he got appreciation one time at Cobb, and the Cobb Ram, you listen to me, said, "Come on, let's support Coach Jeff from the mighty Cobb Ram's." Uh, Cobb alumni, we going to support Coach Jeff. And, uh, uh, we having a, uh, MP, I think, we having a meeting at our church, Sarah, the Bruffel, Cypico, Mr. Parker know about that, the, uh, MP, uh, we, we going, Cypico, uh, has had a settlement or something. We going to have a meeting this coming Saturday at eight o'clock. Anybody want to come out to the Bruffel? We going to have a Bruffel this coming Saturday at eight P.M. So, that's all I would like to say, and, oh, my sister's birthday coming up, March the third, uh, coming up. My sister, Linda Jenkins, give my hat off to my sister. That's why I stay with my sister now. So, give my hat off to my family and sister. So, Mr. Horton, Steve, uh, Steve Horton, let's say happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, and hope you have minimal birthdays, and God continue to bless you. And so, I hope y'all to be able to come to the Mount Heaven. That, that's down Cypico, Michael Washington. It's going, we going, all day, but we, uh, we going to sing at, uh, two-thirty. We just left Brighton this Sunday, this past Sunday, Reverend Walker Church, I mean, uh, not Rever- Reverend, uh, um, when, um, when our church, um, I can't call the name of the pastor, but anyway, we just left, uh, up in the Walter, uh, the church over there, and, um, and, uh, we, we had a wonderful time, men of praise. We go everywhere, sang everywhere, and, and we want y'all to City Council come on out and, uh, listen to us out there to, uh, what I said the name of the church? Uh, the name, uh, Mount Heaven Baptist Church in Cypico this coming Sunday. And y'all come on out and, and enjoy the men of praise with Poli, Chief John Johnson singing. And y'all come on out and and enjoy the Miller Parade with Poli Chi John Johnson singing. And uh if y'all come, I'm 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 gonna invi- uh say, visit, y'all visit, say the council, come on. And uh Austin wants you to, if you don't have a busy schedule, person, come on out to three o'clock to this coming Sunday at uh Mount Heaven.
Thank you. As long as you get the mayor one of those shirts and ties, you know, then we'll be good to go. Next speaker.
Should be Erica Jackson.
Erica Jackson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Ashley Daniel and this is Erica Jackson. Um this year, if you take a look at your packets, we've passed them around. We are doing the second annual Magic City-
Speak into the microphone.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Okay, the second annual basketball, Magic City Basketball Tournament. Um last year, participation went well. Um we had minimal support, which it was our first year. This year, basically, we want the city behind us.
Hello, good afternoon. Um like she said, I'm Erica Jackson. Now, this is an event. Um we did put this together, but we are looking to do it. Uh if you will look at the what we passed around, you'll see that we're trying to do it at Carver High School. And it is gonna be a free event to the public. We are asking that they do donate school supplies, um just so we can give something back also. Now, this is, like she said, we did have minimum, um but we did have a great turnout, so that's why we're looking to do it again. But we would like the support of Birmingham School System also, um to be able to assist us with this.
Okay.
And if any, I have extras, I'm sorry. I don't think enough got passed around, but if anybody wants one.
All right.
No questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Next speaker.
Uh Reverend Peddway.
Reverend Peddway.
This is the mayor's office and council. Like I said, good morning.
Good morning.
Now, I'm glad to be with you uh this morning. It's been kinda rough with me. In the first of uh January, I had a heart attack and I opened heart surgery. In February, I had a stroke. I couldn't walk. I couldn't talk. I couldn't do anything, but I'm here today. And among the living, uh one of my main concerns is Shalalan and Grace Hill Cemetery, where our loved ones are in need of maintenance and care. And let us not forget to work in unity. I'm an old foot soldier and I remember how things used to be. And let's work together in unity and love and get some things done. And I pray for you and I want you to be healthy. God bless you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Cedric Hatcher.
Reverend Hatcher. You state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Cedric Hatcher. At a request from some of the citizens, brother president, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you what they've been saying. Said, "Bro said if he would give you the time, he'd give Bishop Woods to stand there and do his little hooping and hollering and canon." Said, "They'll be all right down there if they gave you the same time." Now, let me go on to my sermon this morning. I wanna use a brief message this morning from bodies to builders. From bodies to builders, or you can change around, from builders to bodies. Man, about two weeks ago was one of the most sincere council meetings I ever attended. Throughout the years I ever been coming out here, and I know I've been coming out now about ten years a better. It was just heart wrenching to hear from the mayor's office all the way around that table in front of me. Y'all were concerned about human life in the city of Birmingham. When those parents was up there crying out, "When you gonna find the killer of my son? When you gonna find the suspect that did what he did to my child?" Y'all seemed like, seemed like y'all were concerned. Y'all talked the great talk. We tired, what we gonna do in this city about the crime? And the reason I said about a building, because a building come with windows, come with carpet, come with a desk. You can put a restroom in that building. You can put restaurants in some building. But a body, let's talk about a body for a minute. A body come with a soul. A body come with a seed. Remember he said be fruitful and multiply? A body come with a future. Your future president, your future NBA player, NFL player, a body. So weigh it up for just a second. What's important, a building or a body? Right along in that, we losing so many young people in this city. I'm so tired, y'all, of looking at Facebook and people coming up to me with cell phone. Bro said, "Look at them kids getting to fighting. Look at them kids fighting," while all them people standing around watching it. Now, I got something to say, y'all. If we continuing this city and throughout this country to go to the barber shop, to get on the radio, come down to the city council meeting, and this really one I hate, to go up in a pool pit and talk about how bad it is in our community, if you don't get involved, you're part of the problem. You're part of the problem. You're just as guilty as the one that pulled the trigger. You're part of the problem and you're a coward. You got the Holy Ghost Sunday, but you ain't got it Monday. The Bible said, "I have a knowledge of you for a reason, not just to sing an O Quagmire on Sunday, not just to be a no, a worship boy and all that stuff we do on the inside." Can I tell y'all Satan ain't worried about what we doing inside no church on Sunday? It's when you bring your God outside. People don't mind you having God on the inside, but don't bring him outside. Then you become a threat to the enemy, y'all. We gotta get sincere, y'all. We gotta get sincere, y'all. Now, I got to tell you this part right here too. Y'all that sitting in front of me, that say you concerned about young people and what's going on. If only time I see you concerned when a camera in front of you, you just a liar. You just a liar, because their focus is on you. It ain't on the church. It ain't on the church, y'all. We gotta stop, babe. We gotta stop this stuff we doing, y'all. We gotta stop this fake stuff. He told the church to later see you. You neither cold nor hot, but you lukewarm in Galatians three and verse twenty. He said, "You lukewarm, 'cause you're phony." I'm getting on out here. Don't push no button today. "'Cause you're phony, y'all." We gotta change, y'all. We losing our kids while we going up in a church speaking in tongue, dressing real nice, out quote scriptures. And when I see outside, you ain't saying a word. But Puka died, mama cried. Ray Ray died, mama cried, y'all. That's when I went to Salem and told one of y'all uh uh dedicated some things for me to go to Salem. Look on YouTube on Cedric Hatcher in Salem and you'll see what I went down and did. I went down there and preached the word.
Your time is up.
Yeah, yeah, we need some help, y'all. It take teamwork to make the dream work. If you wanna support me and I can support you, put me in the front. I take it to the projects. I take it to the crack house. I take it to the liquor store to jail and I get in the front. I need y'all help, 'cause y'all got a great voice in this city, but y'all gotta use it. And don't just call thirty three forty in thirteen of chapter six when you doing such a great work. 'Cause remember what Jesus told folk? "Don't tell nobody I did it. Don't go tell nobody." Two reason he told them that, I'm getting on out here. Number one, 'cause the death would have been premature. Number two, Jesus didn't want the publicity, like I've been telling all these folks all over the world that been calling me lately. Bro said, "Don't want no publicity. I'm a servant, not a celebrity." That's stuff that's coming with what I do. But God opened up the door.
Your time is up, Mr. Hatcher.
Didn't no pastor open no door for Bro said. Didn't none of y'all open no door for Bro said. God did it. And if God be for you, who can be against you? Somebody gotta come down and tell the truth, because God tired of phony stuff that going on in this country, y'all.
Thank you.
Yeah, the bullshit. Come to the bullshit, eh? Right about she come to the big, she come to the bullshit, eh?
William Muhammad. William Muhammad.
Mr. Muhammad, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is William Muhammad. My address is four eleven Loraine Street. Uh I just wanted to say that I noticed on the screen it had speaker requests. And I'm not really making a request. I'm coming with the purpose of enlightenment. I like to say that this is voting rights fifty years backwards. A couple of weeks ago, we recently celebrated in Salem the fifty anniversary of the Salem, the Montgomery March, and that was about voting rights. But Alabama has been the civil rights battleground for three major battles. The Montgomery Bus Boycott produced the Desegregation of Public Transportation Act. The Birmingham Children's March produced the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty four. And the Salem March produced the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty five. Yet fifty years after Dr. King, the state of Alabama is violating the voting rights of people in Jefferson County. There are six hundred and fifty eight thousand four hundred and sixty six citizens who live in Jefferson County. An ideal senate district is made up of one hundred and thirty six thousand five hundred and sixty four people. There are three majority black senate districts, Smithelman, Coleman, and Dunn. They are made up of four hundred and five thousand six hundred and seven citizens. That leaves only two hundred and fifty two thousand seven hundred and seventy nine citizens. Not enough to make up two majority white senate districts. Yet, there are eight senate districts that make up the senate delegation. That means that three of them are black majority and five are white. Sixty four percent of the citizens in Jefferson County only elect thirty seven percent, three out of eight, of the delegation. That means that we are denied one man, one vote, we are denied power. If the Alabama senate cannot get two majority white senate districts out of Jefferson County, how in the world can the Jefferson County Commission get three? I failed remedial math in college. I had to copy off my wife to pass the next semester. But still, I understand that if it's the same citizens and the senate can't get three, how can the county commission get three? They are violating our voting rights while we are celebrating fifty years after Dr. King. They're doing what's called stacking and packing. They have put all of black residents in the two districts, one and two. Now, here the senate. The senate don't have enough to have three, but yet the county commission can come up with three. And that's denying us our voting rights, one man, one vote. And it's also denying us the opportunity to make this county what it should be. So I just wanted to enlighten you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, go ahead.
Uh could you come back up, uh William Muhammad? Uh he's absolutely right. Uh before the day out, you will have it in your inbox, uh the lawsuit that was placed. And I can proudly say that I was a part of it. And any other lawsuit that come across the state of Alabama or the United States that will affect our voters' right, you will see my name on it. Because that's something I feel like is precious, and if it wasn't, they wouldn't be trying to take it. And this is something that we need to look into. Because if they start with the county, they gonna be headed toward the city council. All costs need to be on the table when it come up to our voters' rights. And thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, um we're ready for older new business council skills.
Thank you, Mr. President. As always, I want to thank the citizens of District One, as well as the city of Birmingham for affording me the opportunity to be their voice. I do want to call for a resolution of sympathy for Ms. Christina McGlown Hawkins. And let me spell McGlown, that's M C G L O W N. Christina McGlown Hawkins. And now, so move.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Ms. Uh, uh, miss, thank you. Uh Ms. Hawkins is the wife of one of my precious uh neighborhood officers of Sun Valley Neighborhood Association, and that is Mr. Johnny Hawkins. Uh she was such a jewel to the Apple, not Apple Valley, but Sun Valley community. And so, I want to make everyone aware that her services will be at New Pilgrim Baptist Church. Many of you all know what that is, but that's in the western section of Birmingham. Uh and uh that will be at twelve noon on this upcoming Thursday. Do want to make this announcement as well in regards to the neighborhood meeting. Uh we have one tonight. As a matter of fact, her husband said in her memory and in her honor, he was gonna go ahead and proceed forward with having a neighborhood meeting, uh which is gonna be at seven o'clock at the East Benson Valley Recreation Center. So that is the Sun Valley Neighborhood Association meeting, which was the last time I actually got to uh see her. So when people talk about they can't get active, can't get involved, or don't wanna get involved, this young lady had both of her legs amputated, uh one kidney, and still wanted to come out to the neighborhood meeting, still participated in all the different activities, uh not only in the district, but in the Sun Valley community. So just wanted to again honor her with that. The neighborhood meeting, uh like I said, is tonight. Next week, uh we'll have a series of other council, I mean, excuse me, of other meetings. Uh but I did want to make sure that folk are aware that we'll be at Huffman High School on uh April sixth. Uh got a big planned out uh uh semley there, and I'm very excited about that. So without further ado, Mr. President, I'm gonna go ahead and and do what we talked about in terms of the council uh today. But I do want to thank everyone for at least respecting the committee process. And it goes so much better when I think that we respect our colleagues uh together, period, collectively. Uh is one leader, and then you have nine others, excuse me, eight other supporters. And when we disagree, I always said, don't mean that we taking it personal. We just wanna be heard as well. So again, thank you, Mr. President, for uh honoring my wish, uh and I'm gonna excuse myself at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tyson.
Thank you, President. I have some American uh complaints. Uh I have complained about this several times, about the apartment next to Hemp Hill. It's men, uh it's an abandoned apartment complex where they're extending the school. But it's men come out there and expose theirselves to the children as they exit the school, getting ready to go home. I've gotten several calls from the neighborhood about the dishney cleaning out on Grant Avenue Southwest between Seventeenth Way Southwest and Mem Street Southwest. A vehicle is abandoned in front of twelve seventy three Mem Street Southwest. And it has been there and it has been reported several times, but it's still there. Uh Saturday, March the twenty first, North Tittysville will be meeting at eleven A M. at the Tittysville Library. March the twenty third, Woodland Park will be meeting at four P M. at West Center Street School. Five Point South will be meeting at sixteen, uh and then at uh at six, at the Five Point West Library. Uh this Sunday, at Payne's Chapel A M E Church in South Tittysville, we kicked off our financial freedom initiative that was started before I became a city councilperson. We realized in our community that people wanted to buy homes, but majority of them rented houses because their credit was in such bad shape. This program is free to the public. We expected forty people. We had thirty eight in the great turnout. And we believe, and I will give you a report, uh when all of the participants, uh credit scores has uh been increased. We will have uh for the la- next several months through District Six in the city of Birmingham, we will have sessions on Sunday. Our next session is March the twenty second, right after their church service, Greater Temple Missionary Baptist Church, three hundred Fourth Avenue West, uh in the Gray Mount Community. We are asking everyone to come out and to participate and become financial, financial freedom uh for the year. You can contact my office at two five four twenty three fifty eight for more details. On Wednesday, March the eighteenth, Hemp Hill Elementary will start their uh walking school bus program. You can call the school, or you can meet at the West End Library uh for your children to participate in the program at seven o'clock. On this Thursday, March the seventeen, on March the nineteenth, U A B will play our state in the first round of the N C A A tournament. The watch party will be at the Cantina in Uptown. We're at uh, the game will start at eleven forty five A M. We're asking for everyone to come out. It will actually be on the big screen. So our precious U A B, we are asking for everyone to come out in Uptown, eleven forty five on the nineteenth to participate in the watch party. And that ends my announcements. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh Counselor Rafferty.
Thank you. Uh neighborhood meetings coming up, uh Thursday night, March nineteenth. Brown Springs will be meeting at Saint James Baptist Church at six. And then Monday, March twenty third, Crestwood South will be meeting at the Crestwood Community Education Center at six thirty. Southeast Lake has canceled their neighborhood meeting. And Huffman will be meeting at the Parkway Christian Church at seven P M. Also, I needed to announce that the Transportation and Communications Committee will be holding uh our meeting, uh which was rescheduled for this month, four P M. tomorrow in conference rooms D and E. And I believe that's all of my announcements. Um and please, everyone, um expect a full report. Is that for today? You want me to announce this for you? I'd love to. Um uh. Anyway, I expect some reports, especially concerning the budget training session that I went to, because it was very informational. The toolbox that I already forwarded you um had some very pertinent questions. We've been asking the wrong questions during the budget process, so we need to reformulate, rethink how we're handling it. Um today, U A B men's basketball send off celebration um for March Madness is going to be Thirteenth Street side of Barto Arena at one P M. I do believe we've kind of missed it. That's, that's, that's way too bad. And I also saw another, um there was another viewing party that was going to be up at, I was looking for this in the the Save U A B football website, but I believe it's also at Snoozy's um the night of the game, so there's two watch parties.
That's why I wore my shirt, because I wanted to go to the send out.
Oh, it's at the alumni house. Okay. So there's plenty of watch parties going on, and we all need to watch. And and I will, although I'm not a big fan of basketball, just 'cause it makes me tired. People move way too fast. But thank you, Counselor Oz, uh Counselor President Austin.
Thank you. Counselor Lundey.
No report, Mr. President.
All right, Counselor Hoyt.
Should have took a cue from a preacher. I should have not had anything to say either. But I do need to make a couple of announcements. Uh Green Acres Neighborhood meets uh tonight at the Lifton Christ Worship Center. That's at six thirty. Uh the Mac Alpine Neighborhood Association meets on uh this Thursday, the nineteenth, at six o'clock, at Mac Alpine Recreation Center. And the next Public Safety Committee would be held on April the sixth, two thousand and fifteen, at four o'clock in these chambers on third floor. Uh the Western Precinct ribbon cutting was held on yesterday, uh the sixteenth at noon. Um and uh due to a conflict that I had in with my schedule, I want to thank uh Mayor Bell, Counselor Robison, uh Counselor Abbott, and Counsel- Counselor uh Tyson, all who had an opportunity to come. And uh I think when people see you, they see the city, they see me. So um I just want to say kudos to you all. Um and I want to say to the uh to the uh folk on the western side, uh it's been a long time coming, but it's here. And we're very appreciative uh for that. Uh also, had a chance to attend a uh a mortgage burning with Counselor Tyson in her district this past Sunday. Uh new Saint James uh A M E Church, and Bishop James Davis was the uh preacher of the hour. Uh if you've never heard Bishop Davis, he is an awesome man of God, and he know how to put it down in record time. He said, "Give me, give me eighteen minutes." What I'm telling you, at seventeen oh one, he was done, you know, and towed the place up. So I I love Bishop Davis. He's doing a great job uh with the uh Ninth Episcopal District. And uh he's one of my favorite uh bishops of all time. So I want to say uh thank you, Bishop, for the message. He said, uh his message was, "You ought to say something." And so, uh just like Brother said, he's, he's saying something, so we ought to say something. Uh I want to say, um you know, I have the pleasure of ser- of in the honor of having the same birthday as Mrs. Melva Langford. And so, uh we both share the same day. And so, I want to say happy birthday to Mrs. Langford. And also, Counselor Tyson, uh had her birthday last week, uh the eleventh, I believe it was. No, it was, it was last week, so I'm not sure. The seventh, I believe it was. And so, we want to say happy birthday to her as well. And I want to say happy birthday to uh former mayor, um Larry Langford. Uh his birthday is today. And so, we want to wish him a happy birthday as well. Uh that's all I have. Um my thought for the day, uh Psalms one oh three. "The Lord has established His throne in heaven and His kingdom rules uh over all." So uh just want to end on that note. And Mr. President, you've been stellar today. I appreciate uh your leadership and the balance there, eh? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll turn on my-
Excuse me. Can I say one, one thing? I do want to say this. And I said to Mr. Stanley, uh Mr. Stanley's a fine attorney and does an excellent job for the city. I don't want anybody ever think that I don't appreciate what he brings to the table and what he offers as an attorney, because I have an utmost respect for him. And I do apologize. I apologize to him privately, and I'm apologizing to him publicly. Uh but I, I, you know, I do think that sometime, you know, they're not always responsible for what they bring before us. You know, the administration tells them what to do. Uh and that's, you know, like they tell me what to do at the housing board, so uh I understand that. But I just want to make that clear. Uh Mr. Stanley is a fine man, fine family man, and a fine attorney. And I've been with him for a long time, so thank you. All right.
Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um well, I wanted to say happy birthday to Lisa Cooper. Her birthday, I believe, was Friday. So there are a lot, and my dad's birthday would have been today, so he was a Saint Patrick's Day baby, so. The uh next Budget and Finance Committee meeting will be Monday, March twenty third, which is this coming Monday, at four P M. in conference rooms D and E. Submissions are due on or before tomorrow, March eighteenth, at twelve noon. Do I need to repeat that?
Second, second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, um yesterday, the ribbon cutting of the West Precinct. Well, I didn't make a motion.
She didn't make a motion.
All I did was say, did I need to repeat that? And y'all were feeling so guilty, 'cause you over here chit chatting. You thought you'd missed a resolution.
They said.
And all I said was, did I need to repeat the fact that submissions are due on Wednesday, which is tomorrow at twelve noon for Budget and Finance?
Well, we just passed a-
Yeah, I was trying to just-
A resolutions to uh to back up what you were saying.
I was trying to just pretend like y'all didn't do that, but I couldn't get by with it.
Yeah.
That's good. Now, if only the people out there who never get there on time would listen. Um the ribbon cutting for the West Precinct yesterday was really nice, beautiful building. I'm sorry I didn't get to go on the tour, but I had to get back to work in a big hurry. I didn't exceed the speed limit, but I did have to get back, so I'm gonna have to go back for a private tour later. The Birmingham Historical Commission meets at three thirty today. And um yet tomorrow, the Regional Planning Commission of Greater Birmingham has its- has its annual meeting at the McWayne Science Center from nine to one. And from three to four on Friday, the twentieth, we will be hearing the findings of the Birmingham Museum of Art Expansion Feasibility Study that we funded, of course, with the taxpayers' money. So I think that that will be an item of interest for all of us, because I, you know, I don't want them to move, but they've got a lot of stuff in storage that they can't show anybody. The next neighborhood meetings on Ma- are this coming Monday, Five Point South Neighborhood meets at six o'clock. And at six-thirty, the Crestwood South Neighborhood meets. And, Mr. President, that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Protem.
Thank you, Mr. President. And there are a lot of birthdays in March, and happy birthday to everyone, and, um, including my roommate from college, Mr. John Hudson, who's also Vice President of Alabama Power and President of the Alabama Power Foundation. His birthday was yesterday. So he's also the husband to Municipal Judge Naya Parsons Hudson. Want to say ari to my colleagues from my delegation, uh, from Jamaica. I was truly humbling to spend time with Prime Minister Portia Simpson Miller for two days. And Jamaican Investment Forum has a lot of opportunities, not only with Hub Logistics, with Biofuel. And I will bring a report back to the Budget Finance Committee and the Economic Development Committee at your next, meeting on next month, to give a report on the Jamaican Investment Forum, the opportunities that we have here for the city of Birmingham. The Minister of Industry, Commerce, and Investment, Anthony Hilton was tremendous. And there are a lot of opportunities with that Caribbean country, which is one of the tops in the Caribbean to do business with, according to the Fortune, Forbes Magazine in two thousand and fourteen. So I look forward to bringing that port to both chairmen, those committees, on next month. Resolution, congratulations, and this is about the third time I've dealt with this, Mr. Clerk. But I was told by my staff I had to do this. To Mrs. Betty George Pinkney, Secretary of Grisilla Heights Community. Betty Pinkney is a fervent leader and servant to the community in District Seven, has never taken her duties and positions lightly. We want to thank you for your faithful service to the community. Move the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you, counsel, and that was a resolution there, Counsel Abbott. Congratulations, they passed it. Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't mention this to the mayor earlier, but on Winona Drive in West Goldwire Community, I think it was a rental property, I think it's twenty-six oh-one, Winona Drive. They had a pile of trash and, and clothes, and, you know, people that move stuff out the house and put it on the side of the road. Someone could look at that and see if it's been removed for me, and public works would be greatly appreciated. I know we've given accolades to UAB, and congratulations to Coach Jerry Haas and the Blazers on their bid to the NCAA tournament. I've done my brackets, I don't know if you have, but if you haven't, you need to hurry up. I think the deadline's today. Want to congratulate my son, Trey, on his Birmingham ICE AAU Basketball Team Under Twelve. We got back from Jamaica and went to Tuscaloosa, and they won the championship. He had three games, we had double figures and rebounds, and that team is actually sponsored by Eric Bletso, the former Parker Grade, Kentucky Grade, and now Phoenix Sun Grade. So we're excited about that championship win and, uh, the success is there. Grisilla Heights New Year, New Year Kickoff Celebration has been rescheduled and will take place this Friday at six at Galilee Baptist Church. Also, on Friday at seven o'clock PM, the Mountain View Subdivision in the Oxmo Valley Community will celebrate their tenth anniversary of their actually subdivision and homeowners association. Looking forward to that. Garden Highlands meets tonight at seven. Hillman Park meets Thursday at six, and Germania Park meets Thursday at six o'clock. And, um, again, the West Precinct Ribbon Cutting, Counsel Abbott, was great. Glad to see you there. Glad to know that Counsel Hoyer's been a voice for that project for a long time. It was truly tremendous, and I truly believe that's gonna be a welcome center for citizens in the western area, in the western community. And I know Captain James Blent is excited about the West Precinct and what it will offer for our men and women in blue, so.
Oh, and the fact that it was named for Deputy Chief Leroy Stover.
Leroy Stover. It was named in his honor, the first African-American police officer hired in the Birmingham Police Department. So it was great dedication, but Stover's there, and it was truly nice and truly a beautiful day on yesterday. I believe that's it, Mr. President. It's been a long day. And that ends my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Real briefly, I do want to thank, um, a special thanks to Marcel Darius. He contributed a hundred thousand dollars to the Wauhoma Park, Neighborhood Park, Wauhoma, for rehab, rehabbing the park, and I just want to thank him. I've known him for several years now, and he's a great guy, great young man. He plays for the Bills. Great, exceptional athlete, but he really, even more importantly, he does care about the community from whence he came. And so I just want to thank him. I was not able to be there, I was in class, but I do want to thank him for his, his commitment to our community. And he and I have spoken about him being involved in the city, and so I just want to publicly thank you, Marcel, for your work. And I also want to thank Frank Matthews for being there, um, to, to really, um, to really just, you know, offer some thanks, and, and in my absence, Frank was able to represent me well. So thank you, Frank. God's gangster. You all right with me? I don't care what anybody says about you. Central City Neighborhood, tonight, March seventeenth, will be meeting from six to seven in the Story Council Room in the main library, in the main library, central library downtown. Graymont meets March eighteenth, twenty fifteen, four to five, Smithfield Library. Crestwood North meets Monday the twenty-third, from six-thirty to seven-thirty at Girls Inc. Druid Hills meets Monday, March twenty-third, from six-thirty to seven-thirty at Saint James Missionary Baptist Church. We will have upcoming event, Dr. Keisha Ashley, which is the author, who is the author of the Gather Your Pearls, Mastering Disappointment, Fear, and the Desire to Quit. She will host the Embracing the Winner Within Conference on Saturday, the twenty-first, beginning at six PM at the Sheraton Hotel in Ballrooms Three and Four. For information, visit the council's website. We have a nine-one-one commission meeting immediately following this meeting, which will only last a few minutes. And then we have a District Five Neighborhood Officers Workshop, which will take place Monday, March thirtieth, from six to eight at the IMS Building on the second floor, located directly across from City Hall. Please RSVP to my office no later than this Friday, the twenty-seventh, or next Friday, the twenty-seventh. Just so that we make sure that you're there. So the final thing, we have a photo shoot outside, Council's at Liam Park. We, well, we, each one of you all are asked to go out and do your individual photos, and we'll have to come back and reconvene for a group photo, but just reminded we have that. So, Ms. Protem.
Just real quick, thank you, Mr. President. My wife just texted me and reminded me that the Los Angeles State Community College Women's Basketball Team, Coach Wiley, they won their conference. So congratulations to Coach Wiley and the Los Angeles State Community College Women's Basketball Team. They made it to the Nationals. Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, I want to thank Officer Lewis and Officer Mays for providing our security today. We have a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. All right, we're going into the nine-one-one commission meeting. Mr. Clerk, you want to call the robe?
Okay. Councilmember, Commissioner Abbott.
President.
Commissioner Hoyer. Commissioner Lundy. Commissioner Walker. Commissioner Rafferty. Commissioner Protem Robertson.
President.
Commissioner Scales. Commissioner Tyson.
Uh, Commissioner, President Austin.
President, thank you. We have six items, Mr. Silas, uh, we can go through them fairly quickly.
Absolutely.
If you don't mind, we've got...
I'm sure it's been, been a long day, I appreciate you. I've got a little bit of energy.